For Monday, January 28, 2019 to order. Our first order of business this morning is our delegations and our first is our presentation to our New Year's baby. The New Year's baby's gonna be here. Unfortunately, we're just running a little behind with four babies. Brenda?
Excuse me, your worship. We do have a public hearing.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't have my front seat.
He knew that. He knew that.
Can you read? So let me just get it up.
Do you have Blair's glasses?
Yeah, no. No, I don't want those. Thank you. So we'll call the, open the public hearing and our first piece of that is the corporate officer to read the notice aloud.
Thank you, your worship. This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone that may be affected by the proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment is to rezone the property located at 1552 Loran Drive to allow for a secondary suite within a triplex unit from RM1 residential low-density multiple family to a new zone, RM1A residential low-density multiple family with suites. And there was one comment received from Marquita Lebkey who was opposed to the zoning amendment and her letter is attached to the agenda.
Thank you, Brenda. So for the first time, we'll call for any questions or comments. So, yes, the delegation table is here. If you can just speak into the mic because we are being recorded for, yeah, we all do.
My voice is loud enough. I'm here representing the neighborhood of Loran area in regards to the rezoning application for a unit that directly affects everyone in our neighborhood.
Could you give your name for us, please?
Brad Lebkey.
Thank you, Brad.
My concerns are basically what is the benefit to the city of Dawson Creek and the Loran neighborhood in particular for this rezoning application? And my biggest question is, is what does the increasing density in the neighborhood where previous development has failed due to lack of demand? Why are we doing this again? Why are we increasing the density again when there was a development that was proposed, accepted, and never completed in the same neighborhood? We're just doing things over and over and over again. We're benefiting the individual, not the neighborhood. And I thought the city's charter was about the neighborhood, not the actual individual. Those are my greatest concerns, other than the other greatest one is parking. Where is this person's park? There's no parking up there as it is. They're already parking in the Lebkey Park, Lebkey Park parking lot as the overflow is. And that new development that was done previously, the no parking signs that were posted in front of that building have been removed by the contractor and never been replaced. And so now there's parking in front of the city, which was part of the variance to begin with. The original variance for the latest development up there called for no street parking. Everything was to be in rear because of access by the fire department. Those signs have been removed and there's now parking on both sides of the street, limiting access by the fire department. This development here, we're gonna have another car, maybe two. Where are they gonna park? They got a two, two bay parking there. They're gonna end up parking on the street or in the, in the Lebkey parking lot, which is designed for the park, not for overflow, for the condoms that are going there. Those are my concerns. And I don't believe it's in the city's best interest to set a precedence of increasing the, the density in an area that already is. And the previous one that was proposed started, has failed. So I don't see a benefit. I see no benefit at all to allowing another variance in that same area.
Thank you. Counsel. Yes, Counsel, Marquita.
I'd just like to add, I mean, your worship.
I almost called you counselor.
That, you allow this one, you have to allow in time, all of them. You're setting a precedent by allowing one unit to increase their capacity. You have no right to deny any of the others. So it's just gonna snowball.
Thank you. Go ahead.
One more thing. I'd like to know, what's your definition of low density? They're packed in like sardines.
Thank you. Thank you. So we appreciate you coming in and counsel will be considering it further. Counselor Lexner?
I think Counsel Wilber.
Counsel Wilber, then Counselor Lexner.
I, I actually, it's really through you, your worship, to staff around the parking issue. There's still some foundations there that haven't been developed for that development. Was there allotted parking for those other buildings? So this is one unit. So I'm just wondering if there's a concern about parking from the neighborhood. Is it allocated in the future? So I'm asking to staff.
Yeah, they've allowed one parking stall per unit. And how many families do you know have one?
Duncan?
So, to your worship, I can ask, Kevin, but Brenda, is this better discussed under the bylaw?
Okay.
Yeah, any discussions through the public hearing can be just clarifications from the delegation and then we'll further discuss.
All right. So I'll save it for future story. Thank you.
Counselor Lexner?
That's where mine would fit as well. I have some questions around that.
Thank you. Second time for any comments or questions? And for a third time, any comments or questions? Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing and move on to our regular agenda. Go ahead.
Just your worship, for the delegation that was just here for the public hearing, for their information, when would this be done? It's later in our meeting today.
It'll come back into our agenda this morning.
Okay. But it could be sometime, just so it isn't first on the agenda in case you were waiting.
So first up this morning is our delegations and our first delegation this morning is Chris Bianca and Maverick Wells, who are our New Year's baby. And it's always a real cool thing for us to welcome our newest citizen, along with his brothers and mother and father and all of them. Morning. How are you guys? Nice to see you. Welcome to City Hall. Nice to see you. How did you skip out?
Is he giving you candy?
Good morning.
I guess some pencils or something.
Come in, come in. Welcome. So this is a real pleasure. Newest Dawson Creek hockey team. Or ball team, or, congratulations, you guys. Congratulations. We're thrilled to see that our newest citizen was early, early, the January 1st at 3:00 in the morning, I think around, and probably the region's first baby, was he? Pretty close?
Yeah.
In the piece? So congratulations. It's always a really fun time to be able to welcome our newest citizen. So we have a really nice plaque here to say, welcome to our New Year's baby, your brother, born on January 1st, seven pounds, 12 ounces. And it's Maverick Bacon Mason Kyle Wells. He's a pretty cool boy. You guys got a new brother. So here we go. We'll just give you this and come on up and we'll get a picture for, gotta, gotta get that.
Scooch in.
Gotta get that little brother in for a picture. Here, I'll hold him for you.
Be careful, your worship.
I'm good at this game. I'm a grandpa, baby. A baby grandpa.
All right, look at that.
The baby or the plaque? Maverick's just taking all this in. Yeah, he is good. Congratulations, you guys. Thanks for coming in this morning. I want my mom back. Thanks so much for coming in. Congratulations. Thank you. Good job, you guys. Look after that little brother of yours. Look after that guy. Give me five. Thanks very much. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Our next delegation this morning is, we have Katie in the crowd from TransCanada, and we're gonna do some presentations on our kindness meters campaign.
To your worship, excuse me, your worship.
Yes?
They're running a little late and so, do a switch.
For the?
Delegations for the kindness meters.
Oh, they're not here. Do you wanna switch?
If we could do the presentation first, yes.
Oh, you guys. Holy, no, I'm good with that. You can see what kind of a day this is gonna be. So good morning. Welcome, you guys. It's good to see you in Dawson Creek. Thanks for coming.
That would not be a more difficult act to follow.
Yeah, that's pretty tough. So we have Katie O'Neil and Heather Desarmia, Desarmia?
Desarmia.
Desarmia from TransCanada, and they're gonna give us an update on the Coastal Gaslink project. And it's good to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Well, good morning and all, pretty much all familiar faces. It's great to see everyone and thank you for your time this morning. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Katie. Oh, thank you so much. There we go. And just wanna introduce everyone to Heather as well. So sadly for me, I am in the process of moving off of our B.C. project. So, yeah, so it's been just an absolute pleasure working with all of you. It's been a great honor, really. And I have loved working on these projects more than anything. And you are in great hands with Heather, and it'll be a very slow transition over the next few months. So I'm not going anywhere right away. But Heather will sort of be your, your go-to gal moving forward. And she's based here in the, in the, in the piece. Yeah. So she'll be kinda going between Dawson and Chetwind and Fort St. John for this project. So we just wanted to be, come here today to give you a little bit of an update on the Coastal Gaslink project. We are cooking with Crisco, as they say now. So wanted to sort of let you know where we're at with the project. So we, you know, a little bit about TransCanada. You guys know us. But we're one of the largest gas operator, natural gas operators in North America. We have 95-ish thousand kilometers of natural gas pipeline that we operate. We've been here in B.C. for over 50 years, primarily down in the kind of foothills area near Cranbrook, but up in the piece region here, probably for the last 10, 15 years or so. So just before we kick off, want to give you a little bit of context about where we are in the project right now. So October 2nd, we received our much anticipated final investment decision. So that came from LNG Canada, who is our primary customer for the Coastal Gaslink project. So this was sort of the, the one piece we were waiting for, the, the final piece of the puzzle to allow us to start construction on the project. So as you know, we've been engaging on this project since 2012. So it was a long time coming and we were very excited to get this, to get this news. Certainly, that doesn't mean that it's smooth sailing for us either at this point. So, you know, we're at a challenging time in the project as well. Right now, we do have some activities at the Morris River Bridge. I'm sure you've heard about in the news that are, you know, have been challenging our ability to do some work in that area. But certainly, with all credit to the Witsowatton Nation, to be our CMP, to some of our folks at TransCanada, we've had, come to an agreement or we're working on an agreement so that we can finish up some of that really important work that we need to do to access that area. So, you know, we're proud of the relationships that we've built. We've signed 20 project agreements across the route and we really look forward to continuing successful construction on the project. So here's just, you know, sort of the overview of the route that we proposed. Again, starts here up here in Dawson Creek and goes out to LNG Canada's, or natural liquefied gas facility, sorry, in Kidamat. So the route up here in the northeast, so contained within PRRD are sections one and two of the project. I'll show you another map in a second, but we're basically, the project is split into eight sections in total. So the project will only require right off the bat one compressor station. So that's up near here at Wild Lake. And then there will be three sort of initial phase meter stations as well. Most of the work on those facilities won't start until 2020. So we're still a ways away from kind of the, the facility portion. It's really that pipeline construction that we're starting to work on right away. So these are the work packages. So as I mentioned, split into eight sections. Section one and two, as mentioned, are up here within the piece region. So Sararis Murphy is our prime contractor for those two sections, based in Fort St. John. They've done a lot of work for TransCanada and have done really great work in the region as well. So we're certainly proud to have them on as a, as a contractor here. So talking about sort of our 2019 construction program. So the, this is really all about getting access to the right of way. So, you know, as mentioned, the, the facilities, the actual pipeline sort of construction work will be taking place more in 2020. Really, this 2019 work has a lot to do with clearing mostly and building the access roads that we require and things like that. So you can kind of see on the map there that SMJV piece is sections one and two. So they'll sort of be working west to east, I guess, and getting camps set up as well. So we'll speak to the camps in a second. But really, it's, that's gonna be the primary chunk of work that you'll see taking place this year from Sararis Murphy is, is getting all that sort of ground work in place to kind of hit the ground running with construction in 2020. We also sent a copy of the section one and two schedule to staff, last week or a couple weeks ago, I guess. So the, so the city of Dawson Creek does have a copy of sort of what that more detailed construction schedule is gonna look like as well. So talking about our camp location, so you can see that, it's tough to see, but so we sort of have two yellow bubbles and two green bubbles. So those green guys are the camp locations that we will be sort of focusing on in 2019. So we have the two main camps in, for section one and two. One is the Secunka River Camp. So it's about 40 kilometers southwest of Chetwind. And then the other one is the Chetwind Camp, which is about 6.5 kilometers south of, of the district of Chetwind as well. So, you know, those will be primarily occupied, sort of their peak will be end of 2020, early 2021 is kind of what we're aiming for. But again, doing some work to get some of that stuff set up in advance. We'll have a third sort of smaller camp as well. It's called the, it's gone by a few different names, the Headwall Camp, the Drill Camp. That'll be very small and just, just for workers who are working on the, the drill part of the construction project. So up in this area, we have our, so Civio and Black Diamond will be sort of our camp contractors. And, you know, TransCanada and, and these two companies as well have a slew of, of standards around a bunch of things pertaining to the camp, just to make sure that, you know, they're operating efficiently, safely, you know, all things to make sure that they're as self-contained as possible. So we're not drawing on resources from the municipalities and the regional district wherever we can. So just, you know, a few of the features that we'll have, and I'll dive into that a little bit here. So some of the typical camp amenities that we have, you know, first and foremost, we understand we're not the only game in town. And there's, you know, we need to be attractive to people who wanna work on or do this type of work. We need to provide facilities that are attractive to workers in the region. So, you know, we have a few different sort of recreational facility type things that we have available. This is all pretty standard, but, you know, gyms and, you know, other recreation facilities like pool and things like that. You know, we will have a sort of full medical clinic on site as well. So we'll have a roving nurse practitioner that will sort of be rotating between all the camps. But we'll also have onsite paramedics, first aid attendants, things like that. So our goal is to be as self-contained with, in, in terms of medical support as possible. Oh, so we'll also have, you know, the camp always will come with its own fire suppression and things like that. So again, let's, you know, an area where we hope to be as self-contained as possible to make sure that, that we're not drawing on the, the resources of the municipalities if we do encounter an incident. When it comes to, you know, drugs and alcohol, so we do testing when, when workers are coming onto site. So we have a zero tolerance approach to, you know, the possession of illegal drugs within our camps and we do test on a regular basis. So the stockpile locations, so these are, again, are sort of the two within, what am I looking at here? Sorry, two within the, we have the wrong bubble circled there. I'm sorry. So those two yellow guys are the stockpile locations. So again, we have one stockpile site about 10 kilometers west of Chetwind. And then there will also be another stockpile site at the Secunka River Camp as well. So we are, you know, as we've committed to throughout the project, we are going to be hosting these economic summits. Basically, this is an opportunity for local contractors, local businesses in the region to come and, you know, meet with the prime contractors and, and basically find out how they can get work on, on the project, put their name forward. So we have one taking place here in Dawson Creek on Thursday. So certainly, if anyone would like to attend, we'd, we'd be happy to have you. We've been working closely with Chambers Commerce and, you know, in Fort St. John on the, you know, economic development side to sort of come up with a, a list of businesses that, you know, we've sort of targeted to, to come up to this event. So we're really hoping this will be a great opportunity, both for the prime contractors as well as for the local businesses as well to make some connections. So we've been a partner in Northern B.C. and Northeast B.C., you know, since we started this project in, in 2012. Since then, TransCanada's invested over $8 million in Northern B.C. through our community investment program. We've also invested over $3 million. A lot of that up here in the piece region at the Northern Lakes College. So there's the mayor and I, we were very color coordinated that day. We did a good job. So that was the new trades training building, which is beautiful. I'm sure you've all been. But we just think that's such an important part of, of being a, being a business operating in this area. And we're certainly proud to continue that, that community investment program. So just some highlights for, you know, kind of wrapping up where we are with Coastal Gaslink. So we have all of our necessary regulatory approvals that we need. We've awarded over $2.8 billion worth of pipeline construction contracts between those four prime contractors. We're very proud of this. $620 million have gone to First Nations contractors along the route. So we have our four designated services that are guaranteed to go to a First Nations business or a joint venture partnership. So those are things like camps, clearing, medical, and safety are sort of those four. So that was a, a good chunk of money that's, that's gone to those First Nations contractors. And we will be reporting out on our local spend as well. So we hope to, you know, once we sort of really kick off with construction, we hope to, you know, have those reporting dollars for what we've spent in Dawson Creek as well. So we're, we'll be excited to share those with you once we get moving. As mentioned, we've signed 20 project agreements with Indigenous bands across the route. And so now we're just kind of completing that necessary field work to, to really kick off with construction. A lot of that is around that Morris Bridge area. And more than a third of that work is being conducted by Indigenous people in the area as well. So up in this area, we're pretty much good to go. And we'll be one of the first sections to kick off. We have started a little bit of work out in section eight. That's kind of the most mountainous, challenging portion of the project. So a bit of work started out there and then we'll be kicking off here in section one and two very soon. So we hope to, we, we believe we are a world-class pipeline construction company and we certainly hope to be building the best, as we say. So just an example of some other pipeline construction projects, we've had sort of a before and after. And this is, we expect to see, you know, no less here in, in the piece region across Northern B.C. as well. So that's all we really had to share with you today. And we're happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Katie. So questions or comments for Katie and Counselor Lexner, Counselor Joubert?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Katie, for the presentation. How are you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. The use of camps is always a discussion point in our region, I'm sure like many others. I know the camps aren't located close to Dawson, but Chetwind, your discussions with Chetwind, how have they gone? I mean, it's certainly, I think, a preference to say, as long as, you know, we have hotels and so on, operating in our communities, our first preference is to make sure they're filled, you know, to contribute to the economic well-being. What discussion have you had on that with the community?
Yeah, certainly, you know, I think across, you know, as is seen here in the, in piece of regional district as well and across the route, I think it, you know, the preference for, for camps or not is very community-specific. I think, you know, our, we've been sort of engaging with Chetwind on those camps for, for quite some time, you know, and obviously things flux so much, right? I think, you know, what earlier on in, in the project, there were times when Chetwind was chock-full and couldn't take anyone else anyway. They obviously have a camp very close to town now as well. I think the discussion has been that because these camps are so large that, you know, it, it made sense to go with a camp model instead of having crews staying in town. For the Drill Camp, because it is quite small, like it's only about 60 people, the decision to do that as a camp, I think, was more of a safety and time issue. We didn't wanna, it's a pretty remote area and we didn't wanna have crews sort of driving that length of time. And I think that sort of in general is why TransCanada does tend to go to a bit more of a camp model, depending on the location. Obviously, we had Tower Birch, I was gonna say last year, but that's a lie. It was in 2017, which is crazy. And so we decided to have the crew staying in town for that reason, right? It obviously provides such a great economic benefit for the community and it was close enough to town. We will be back presenting on another project we have, the Ground Birch Mainline Loop in a couple weeks. And those crews will be staying in town as well. So again, it's, it's a factor of proximity, I think, and drive time and how many trucks you have to have on the road. I think with a project the size of Coastal Gaslink, you know, the town of Chetwind was, was comfortable, just 'cause it takes so many cars and vehicles off the road. It really is a safety thing, being able to bus folks in and out.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Counselor Joubert?
So is there an issue for your project with the National Energy Board as far as jurisdiction for approvals?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We, there has been a challenge to the jurisdiction of the project. So currently, they, I don't know exactly what the timing is, but they will be going through a hearing. We certainly believe that, you know, we've been fully permitted and, and that, you know, you know, in the eyes of the province at least, we're, we're good to start construction. So it's not gonna slow us up at all right now. You know, I think we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, you know, if, if there is a successful challenge and the NEB sort of decides that, yes, they, they should have had oversight into the project. But as it is right now, you know, we've received the, sort of the checkoff from so many regulatory groups that we're, we're gonna sort of proceed until we hear otherwise.
Thanks, Katie. Any other comments, questions? So obviously, thank you. We appreciate the update. We're excited about Coastal getting the nod because Coastal is that link to Tidewater that we really need to have to get our resources. And it's the first major project to see that happen in a long, long time. And so we're excited about seeing it get underway and, and moving ahead. So we appreciate you guys coming in this morning and give us an update. And we certainly look forward to the, all of the other components that are gonna feed into this. And we got a couple more that TransCanada are gonna be in the area. So we look forward to seeing you guys coming back.
On February 11th. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have our other groups here? Okay, good. So we also have the presentation for our kindness meters. And Katie, you guys wanna come on up and we'll do this? Come on up and, come on up and, come on up and.
We don't have a baby.
Yeah, but you get to stand beside the mayor. Come on. Come on!
How lucky am I?
Katie, Katie, we have Womacko Porro.
So the kindness meters has been such a fun initiative for our community, I think, in terms of when it developed and it come through MP Zimmer as a, one of his, one of the constituencies in Northeast BC and from Truro over Scotia. She had saw this story at her hometown that these people, they had developed these kindness meters, and they were out in front of their Tim Hortons store, and people just dropped their spare change into it, and that money was changed, was just donated back into the community. And I thought, what a, what a cool message. What a great message for us. And so we scouted around and we found four or five old meters and...
Poor sucker, Kyle!
And then reached out to Kyle at TransCanada and said, "Look, here's, here's what we got going, and wouldn't it be fun for us to brand these things, the TransCanada Kindness Meters? You guys give us some money, we'll match any of that money that's donated and changed by our residents at the different facilities around the community." And so off it went. And so TransCanada gave us $10,000 to the program, and they matched this money and have been over the last couple of years. Initially, we had, I think, any charity in Dawson Creek could register for it, and we had the four meters, we would collect that change, whatever we got, TransCanada matched, and we would give it out. And so it's been a really, really cool event, I think, for our community. And each time we do it, it's $500, $600, $700, I think has been the allotment. And so I think now we're at the point where we go once a year.
Yep.
I should read my notes.
Yeah, we decided to renew last year. So originally, sort of the partnership was for 2018, and we just appreciated sort of that, that tieback to the community and being able to support those, those groups so much. So we decided to renew on a non-facets.
And I said, when we first launched, we were getting all this media around Western Canada from people picking up on the story of the TransCanada kindness meters. And so I always give Kyle Giddens a bad time. I say, "You didn't give us enough money. We got you way more publicity than you could ever..." So anyway, it's been a great partnership, and we really appreciate TransCanada's coming in and supporting us with this. And so last year, the community had donated and raised about $550 to, and those will be matched. And so the two groups that receiving the funds for 2018 are the South Peace Building Learning Together and Networked Ministry. And so we have some really big checks. So we'll ask the South Peace Society to come up first. That's a big check.
Oh, you do get the baby!
And so there's... And it's amazing, it's amazing to me that you see $540 in spare change. I had a guy send me a note one day, and he said, "Dale, I was downtown, saw your kindness meter across the street. I walked over and put $3.40 into it of the change I had in my pocket." He said, "That money would have never went to a charity," and today it is. And how good is that, that we get to do this for our community? Joanna, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, and I'll just tell you, this money that we're receiving from the BLT Society, it's not going to BLT sandwiches, but to free parenting classes for our community. Yeah, so we offer free parenting classes for everyone to come to and then try and share with us.
Thank you so much. So congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you!
Wonderful to meet you.
Okay, you got it? You got your...
Got it.
Yep. Next is our Network Ministries. Jacqueline, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's perfect.
How are you? Good morning.
I'm good.
Come on in.
There we go.
And again, this doesn't go without saying that there's a ton of work going on by Network Ministries and Jacqueline, and doing some really crazy, amazing stuff in the community. So we're really thrilled that you get a piece of this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And your going, your, your project, you're, you guys are driving hard on your...
We are. So in total fundraising, so this is the "We Need More Space" campaign, which has exploded. So we actually are, in our total fundraising, $3,000 off of $150,000.
Wow, so great.
Good job. Thanks, Jacqueline. Thanks a lot. Thank you, guys. Thanks a lot. Nice to see you. Thank you. Thank you, TransCanada. And tell Kyle he didn't give us enough money.
I will. Doesn't she have to tell him that every time? He's coming back to the...
Yeah, I'll see him Thursday. Our next delegation this morning is Marcia Stewart and Barbara Swale from the Peace Art Society in attendance. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, good morning, and thanks very much for giving us this time. So I'm Barbara, and I'm representing the membership of, well, actually, so is Marcia. We're both here, representing the membership of the gallery and the arts community here in town. And I apologize for the late delivery of this information sheet, but we had a different presentation prepared for you and then kind of realized with the, this rock and hard place you guys are facing with your budget cuts, that we wanted to give you the solid, definite, good reasons to continue to support the gallery at the level that you have been. So we wanted to, we, we jigged things just to give you hard facts, so you know exactly the value that you're able to create with the funding that you provide us. So apologies for the late delivery, but it's all there for you on paper. And, and I just want to also say, in starting, I really, I hope you really get it, that for us, those of us who are on the board, our staff, it's a true privilege to have the management and development of this facility in our hands. We recognize the, the iconic nature of this building, its uniqueness across North America. We, we get to connect with visitors all summer long, we're point of, and in most cases, actually, first point of contact for our tourist business, visitors, because of course, they park in the parking lot, and even if what they're looking for is tourist information, they start with us. And so we take that very much to heart, and it's just such a beautiful place, and it, it has so much potential. So we really, we just, and it's, it's the place in the city, maybe there, and there are others, of course, but, but we get to take playing really seriously, and we really do, and we have a great time doing it. So I'm going to hand the mic over to Marcia Stewart, who is our executive director of a year's duration now. So some of you who are newer counselors may not have had the opportunity to meet Marcia before, but yeah.
And I'm, I'm still quite new in my, in my role. I've been with the gallery for, I think it's just about my one-year anniversary now. So going through this exercise with Barbara and the rest of the board was really a, a good thing to do. It puts everything into perspective, and it really shows how, how strong of a relationship the gallery has with the city, and really, at the end of the day, how much bang for your buck you guys get for the fee for service. So I was away, so Barbara put this one and a half page together, so I can take no credit for it. So Barbara and I were hoping to keep things really casual, and as we go through this, if you guys have any questions, just, you know, just ask away, because it's a, like I said, a great opportunity to talk about all the really good things that the gallery brings to the community, and all of the really good plans that we have for the gallery moving forward. So attached to the one page is our exhibition schedule for 2019. So these are the 11 exhibitions that we're hosting this year. The one that is coming up next week is our Syrian show. It's called Behind the Lines. It's a really unique show that we've partnered with the Penitent Gallery. It's a traveling show, and it's coming to Dawson. So it's, it's a big deal for the gallery to be able to host such a show that supports multiculturalism and really brings an opportunity to the community to learn about this exhibit and...
Yeah, this show has been on tour across Western Canada, but it's an international scaled caliber of show, and a gallery in a town of our size would not normally be able to even bring it in. But that is one small indication of how special our gallery is. It's really, it is really unique. So we're very excited to have this show. It's a, it's a powerful, powerful show, and we'd love to have you all join us for the opening.
So as Barbara mentioned, we, the gallery is kind of the first point of contact for many visitors as they come to Dawson Creek. So typically, in a year, the gallery sees about 17,000 visitors just in the summer. So that's our, that's these visitors' first point of contact. And when they come in, obviously, they see the art, they chat with us, and we funnel them right down into the downtown. If they're going to Hugamug or Bill's Muse or wherever it is, they're looking for something to eat, they're looking for something to do, to stretch their legs, and they go downtown. So...
Yeah, we use our, we have what we call the art walk, and that's where our artists partner with local businesses to hang their original works in local businesses. They get signage in the windows, and we're able to give a brochure to our tourist visitors that takes them into the downtown and shows them all these businesses they can visit to see art, because these are people who obviously have an interest, or as Marcia says, stop, take in some food or whatever.
Yeah, so it's almost like 21 little art shows in 21 different businesses in the downtown. So it's a pretty neat, neat concept. Our membership is, is quite dynamic. We have a conservative number of 425 members. So that's individual members. That doesn't reflect, you know, the family of five people who buys one membership. And our members span all across Dawson Creek, the regional district. We have members as far as LA and Vegas, and people all the way southeast. So we're, you know, South Peace Art Society is, is, you know, more than just Dawson Creek, and we're really proud about that. We offer classes, art classes and programming year-round, and it's not just for children, it's for artists of all ages, new artists and artists that have been practicing for their whole entire life. So this year, we offered 910 classes just in the summertime, and we served almost 200 children. So that's a pretty big deal for us. And in doing that, we were able to apply for grants through Young Canada Works and Canada Summer, Summer Jobs, and we employed three local students. So these students, you know, born and raised in Dawson Creek, they go to Toronto, Vancouver, and Kelowna for their higher education, they come back to Dawson, and we're able to offer them summer, summer jobs, which is really great. In 2018, we delivered over 52 adult art classes, and that, in that, over 350 adults attended.
Yeah, one of the things that happened, I can't even, what is it, three, four years ago, when the college cut the visual arts program. So the gallery has really striven to take up the slack there for our adult hobbyists and professionals. I think it's important to notice, to note that many of our adult members are actually exhibit, they're, they're professional artists who show all over Western Canada, and we're also very proud of that fact.
So the, the gallery is in a really unique situation with, with this city, because the city, obviously, the gallery's an owned facility, and the city covers the maintenance and utility costs. That's what our fee for service goes towards. Staff salaries and wages are paid by the, by, by the city, and for the most part, the capital, capital projects and upgrades are, are done because the gallery is able to fundraise the, the money to complete these projects.
Yeah, we want to make really clear to you, you give us $21,000 and change a year, and you've been doing that for 10 years under a contract. We're up for renewal this year, in fact, and so I'm assuming perhaps a renegotiation. What do you get for $21,000? No staff salaries paid for by the city, because we fundraise those. We generate, we figure conservatively in excess of $425,000 of new money with that $21,000. That, almost all of that money would be spent in Dawson Creek. It makes it possible for us to maintain a, a sales venue of sorts for local professional artists and artisans who produce everything from bath bombs to paintings, sculpture, artisan tabling, tables and woodworking. And we, we run over $100,000 in revenues through our system that goes back to those artists and artisans, and they're all local people who are earning a living, some of them on, you doing, through this. Again, we couldn't do that without the $21,000, because it's really key to make the point that we, with that seed funding, our granters and funding sources, they look at us and they go, "Okay, an entity as important as the city of Dawson Creek and as stable, fundamental, solid as the city is providing that money." A lot of what we, we look for is match funding, a lot of what we look, they look for is credibility. So the fact that we have a solid building that is maintained and that the city backs with even that modest amount of money allows us to apply for funding, as I say, to the tune of over $325,000 a year. And last year, just for the record, we, with the help of Community Futures, we couldn't have done it without them, we were able to get another $110,000 on top of our $325 that we fundraise every year anyway, and it can be up to $350 in that range, right? Somewhere in there, depending on the year. So last year, in new money, we contributed $450,000 conservatively to, and actually, if you add back in all of the, all of the artisan and artist revenues through our gift shop and consignment, then we're looking at over $500,000 of money that the gallery actually generated to contribute to the local economy. We're very, very proud of that fact. And we cost you no more than any other city facility relative, as you understand, to the cost of maintaining the building. So we really want to make that point strongly. We also, if I can, shall I just carry on?
Yeah.
I'm on a riff.
I'll just keep nodding.
Oh, I've been digging this up. So with that money that we generate based on your fee for service, we are able to create two full-time professional jobs, two part-time skilled jobs. These are people with training for their roles. They would not have a way to, to earn a living doing those things otherwise. But they are members of our community. They're not people that we imported. They were here, they are qualified, and they are doing, I think, an amazing job. I mean, our curator works half-time and has been able to bring in this Syrian show. We liaison with regional groups like the Federation of Canadian Artists Group and all the local guilds.
Arts Council.
Arts Council, both regional and local. We have a nice, really nice connection with the regional district, who's given us a very generous donation or funding sponsorship this year, and outreach. So one of our main, we have a few main focuses over the next two or three years, and one of them is connection with the, in our Indigenous community, so outreach to Soto, Moberly, and the Métis communities here in the region and in town. And then accessibility, it turns out, we aren't accessible beyond a, a good ramp. We have a ramp to get you in the door, but if you do have to go to the bathroom, you're out of luck, or if you want to get past the show to our upstairs classroom space, it's not possible. And that's been a real dilemma. We've put, can't tell you how many hours into trying to brainstorm a solution to that issue, because it's driven our senior members off-site. They're now being, they have a beautiful facility, thanks to Northern Lakes College, but, but that won't last, because it's slated for demolition. So we have an obligation to them that we feel very deeply, and also, any child with mobility issues can't take our art classes either. So we're desperately looking for a solution. One of our approaches is to have our finances audited this year for the first time ever. And the reason for doing that, at what we consider to be great expense, but the reason we're taking that on is it gives us... but the reason we're taking that on is it gives us, it opens a whole range of capital funding to us that they will not consider giving us if we don't have audited books. So we can access the Federated Co-op funding, Northern Development Initiative Trust, Development Initiative Trust, and other Vancouver Foundation. There's a whole range of funding that now will be available to us.
And big funding for capital projects that address accessibility, multiculturalism, all of these things that are the city's mandate is what the gallery and the board has been really hard to address. And again, like Barbara said, having the seed funding from our contract or fee-for-service is really, really crucial to continue working towards these projects.
We have to, I've got a couple more minutes.
You have to cut us off?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it. You have more information on there? I just want to, if I can, yeah, take one more minute?
Sure.
I can probably sum it up in that time. We take on as many capital projects as we can, and we fundraise for them. So we do our own home system replacement. We're doing our own fundraising for accessibility and things like that. We're very, very cognizant of the generosity of the city in maintaining this beautiful facility for us. And there are many, many pressures. And we, I just want you guys to know, we are doing our best to uphold and exceed our side of the bargain. So I appreciate, we both do very much your time. And love, just love to see you at the opening for this show, for the Syrian show. It really is important. It's a really significant show coming to town. And thank you again for the time.
Thank you for coming in and giving us an update. Counselor Earl.
Just one or two questions. So yes, thank you very much for that. And I don't, I know you mentioned at the beginning, we are currently in the midst of budget talks, and there's some constraints in that regard. I hope you don't feel as though it's a question of the value you bring to the community. I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. So you mentioned the RD gave you some money. Is that something they provide on a consistent basis, given? Or is it just kind of a one-off?
The Rural dividend?
The Regional District. Pardon me, I'm sorry.
They annually give us some money, but it always fluctuates depending on their budget and what our...
So it's not like secured, guaranteed?
No.
Okay. So with respect to the twenty-one thousand dollars, is that kind of the threshold bare minimum amount you need to qualify for all of this other funding? Just, I'm not, not to say what's the minimum amount, but just so we know.
Say we'd had a, an inflationary adjustment every year, and we were getting thirty-one or thirty-two thousand dollars now. We might actually be able to parlay that into even more. And it all goes to programming largely, et cetera, but, yeah, so...
The gallery does run a very, very balanced budget. So the twenty-one thousand dollars is, I mean, we've been getting it for ten years now consistently. So we absolutely do the best that we can with it. And I think that lowering that fee-for-service is going to affect when we apply for grants and we're showing that partnership and that kind of backing that we have with the city and with our other community partners.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in this morning. I appreciate it. Obviously, and obviously, the story goes without saying in terms of the work and the value that goes on there. So that's, we really appreciate the update this morning. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our delegations. Our next order of business, item three is new counselor business. First up, Counselor Wilbur, Counsel of Remuneration Policy. Yeah, sorry, I'll do that.
Thank you. It was something that I had just asked that we brought forward to this meeting to discuss, because we are looking at creating a balanced budget and where we can save some dollars. We have cut the per diem in half. And I think it's worth the discussion that if we're going to look at where we're going to save some pennies and some money, that we look at ourselves first. So our income is considered as self-employment. So I do believe we have the ability still with receipts to work against that one-third that we've lost that is, was non-taxable. So I really just wanted to bring it to the floor for discussion and see where it, see where it ends.
So, thank you. Comments? Counselor Lecter and Counselor Director.
Clarification through administration. Previously, prior to sitting on council, I was asked to sit on the remuneration committee that came up with the remuneration for council. So am I in any way in a conflict if I'm to enter this discussion? I just want to clarify that before things get going.
Through your worship, remuneration, I believe, is specifically identified in the charter as something that council can deal with, even though it financially impacts them?
Well, I think the issue Blair has is when we...
He sat on the...
When we developed the policy, we developed a committee to look at the remuneration. And prior to Blair being elected was on that committee. And so now, as we discuss this, does that create a conflict for him to be faulting it? Brenda?
Through your worship, if there was going to be any change in the remuneration, then another committee would need to be formed to make any changes.
Counselor Javecop and Counselor Parslow.
We just recently discussed this, and I think the motion was passed to adopt the process that's there. So, you know, like, I know that we have a habit sometimes to bring things back if we don't agree with them. But in this case, I mean, it's fairly recent, so I think we just carry on.
Counselor Parslow and Counselor Wilbur.
Yes, the thing that piqued my attention was the self-employment option. If that self-employment option was available, I'm amazed that we hadn't heard about that from the UBCM. That's the first time I've heard of that. And while saying, I would like to have an authoritative opinion, if that's, if that is possible, that we are, I am self-employed seems to me quite amazing to me. I do have other business that is, and I understand all the benefits of that from what you can write off. But I'm amazed that councillors are considered to be self-employed.
Duncan, Brenda, do you guys have any response to that? No?
So, so through your worship, I can talk a little bit about the process we underwent?
No, I guess the question about whether Counselor R. is considered self-employed here? Anyway, so I think that's a question we'll have to answer in terms of if that is a aspect or not to Counselor Parslow's question.
I'm sure my accountant would have told me. He's very good.
Counselor Wilbur.
So that's how I found out, and then phoned Revenue Canada and asked, because I found out through my accountant that I actually could have been writing stuff off. So that's how I did find out that it was considered self-employment. Now, if that's changed because of the, that one-third that's been taken away as tax-free, I don't know. But my accountant has informed me that I am self-employed, so I will be looking at that. I'm fine with the decision that was made, and I understand why we formed the committee and why our remuneration is what it was. I just wanted to be open to the public about it. We have cut our per diem in half. We are looking at every aspect that we can to balance our budget. I just thought in all fairness that when you're doing that, you look at yourself first. And that's the only reason I wanted to bring it back to the table, was just for that explanation of why the decision was made and where we're at. So I have no problem justifying our remuneration to the community, but I just wanted to be open about it and have it on the table as we move forward with our budget. That's why this is not changing.
Yeah, and so, and so to me, the explanation and transparency, certainly, I've done that over the last year and a half from two thousand and seventeen, when we started to talk about why the remuneration in terms of the impacts in nineteen, because of the federal government changing those tax laws that were removing one-third of the tax-free component of remuneration that was going to be removed in two thousand and nineteen. And so for the benefit of the public who are tuning in or listening, and I tried to explain it yesterday on, as it was out in social media, the mayor's remuneration went from sixty-one thousand to seventy thousand. And so that equates and looks like a nine-thousand-dollar increase. The tax implications for that nine-thousand increase, removing the one-third, means that seventy-seven hundred dollars additional going to Revenue Canada for taxation, and sixteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars additional is going to CPP because of the changes to that. So in essence, ninety-four hundred or ninety-five hundred dollars now is additional taxation at CPP to the mayor's remuneration. So in fact, in two thousand and nineteen, the mayor's position now makes less money than it did in two thousand and eighteen as a result of the federal government's changes. So our residents are paying more money, and that money is not coming back into this table to the remuneration of council or mayor, it's going to Ottawa. And so for me, remuneration is a policy that we drive, and like any policy, is to drive the right, hopefully, behaviors and results. And the remuneration policy is intended to allow us to attract people who get the chance to come and serve their community, serve the community and the residents and be elected, and not at the expense of their own pocketbook, as well as to be adequately compensated so that we have the wide demographics of our community represented at this table and not be restricted because of remuneration. So we do have, we do have a policy, we do have a committee structure that's set up. So it's a good explanation for the community in terms of that. So if we have a motion, then good, and otherwise, it's been a good discussion, thank you.
That's all I wanted was discussion, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new counselor business? Counselor Wilbur.
I do have one other thing. Well, a couple. First off, I want to thank all of my friends I made in the desert from B.C. that voted for Tumblr Ridge for Sled Town. They won, so thank you. I think people were starting to run from me when they seen me come. But all of our B.C. friends down there did vote for Tumblr Ridge. But secondly, and I know that staff sent this out to all of mayor and council, was the Dawson Creek shopping event that we've had. So this, I think, is our third year that we've had it. It was a partnership between Love Dawson Creek, Sustainable Dawson Creek and Tourism. And from Plaid Friday kickoff, so the Friday before till, I believe it was December 12th, people were encouraged to shop local, and if they spent forty dollars or more, they could get their name in a draw. And I believe we gave away fifteen prize packages total worth of thirty-nine hundred dollars. But here's the exciting part. Three hundred and nineteen thousand and forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents was spent locally. And eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and one cent came from out of town. So seventy-five cents of every one of those dollars has stayed in Dawson Creek. That's huge in shortly over a week period to our economic, economy in our community and our local shops. So I just want to thank everyone who shopped local. And I want to thank Counselor Kemp and Counselor Earl for being there for the draw, because normally I am, and I wasn't able to be there this year. And thank you to everyone who shopped local, because that's kids taking hockey and ice skating and playing soccer and, and all of those things that we do in our community. So I just wanted to put that out there and just let council know how viable that these partnerships are for our local businesses, who many don't live in town, but they do pay taxes to us for their business that they have here. So thank you to everyone, and just an update.
Thank you, Counselor. New counselor business, Counselor Lecter.
Thank you, worship. A couple of updates on, I guess, opportunities I had between the last meeting and this. I attended the NDIT Trust, Northern Development Initiative Trust, a meeting of which I'm a representative for the council. It was a good first meeting we went to. They, we approved two grants that directly affect us here in the South Peace and Dawson Creek particularly. The Bear Mountain Ski Terrain Park, which is our cross-country facility up on Bear Mountain, was successful and given a grant of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars out of the regional account. And the Bear Mountain Ski Chalet also received the benefit of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars to replace a boiler and, I believe, some further work on an elevator system or some system for the, between the two floors. So good news there. There's a lot of work to do on that. I go back to the beginning of when this was initiated. I think there is huge opportunity, not just for our region, but the cross-regional account too. And I'll continue to bring updates as we move forward to see what we can do and benefit from the NDIT Trust. I also attended the B.C. Natural Resources Forum last week, and it was, I thought, a very successful event. I think it's a largest to date, about eleven hundred delegates attended in Prince George. I know Counselor Earl and your worship were there as well. Couple of highlights. Was able to meet with Minister Donaldson and Minister Hayman in my capacity as representing our council on the Caribou File. Very good meetings. I think there was an acceptance that the handling of the public engagement on this file has not been handled very well from the provincial government's side. I don't think it was neglect, but certainly possibly a misinterpretation of what their requirements were, I'll give them that. But they have agreed to come up. We met as a regional governance board with both ministers. They are going to be engaging the public in February. The dates will be set and publicized. They're coming up to give a presentation. So after all of the work that's gone in by the people that have been on this file, the Caribou Recovery representation was there as well. I would say the meeting was a success. It's unfortunate they had to get to this point to get the public engagement on the road, but it is what it is, and we're well on our way. Andy Calitz, the President of LNG Canada, gave a keynote address I thought was very impressive. I believe it's on the internet if people want to sit and take the opportunity to listen to it. Spoke about the challenges still facing projects that are approved, and I use the word "approved" in the context that they have met all the regulatory requirements, yet they still face illegal roadblocks, I will call them. He thanked the people that supported it and called out the people that don't. We live in a democracy, and democracy has stated the wishes and the decisions of the jurisdictions that are responsible for it. So it's time to move on. It was a great speech, Premier Horgan's speech. I thought he delivered a reasonable speech at the forum. People are always questioning when you sit with a government that was in, in government, and Premier Horgan was in opposition, how can you have anything good to say? You know, it's interesting, as local governments, you have to work with whoever your provincial or federal counterpart is. It's so, I don't think it's productive to, I guess, get involved in the political side that way. Premier Horgan is a friend of mine, and we don't see everything eye to eye, I can tell you that. But his speech he delivered, I thought, was one that was relatively relevant to the situation we face today. And in hopes that he sees things, the concern I do have, without question, is the government's wish to move forward with the UN Declaration of Indigenous Rights. I think that is a concern for me. I believe it gives veto power. They will argue adamantly that it doesn't, but that's a whole other issue. So a quick update on my last few weeks, your worship.
Thank you, Blair. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Earl.
Thank you, your worship. So I'd just like to bring council's attention, the fact that Northern Health has welcomed to its board three new directors, one of them being Dawson Creek's own John Curriata. And wondering if it was appropriate for council to direct staff to draft a welcome letter to the new directors, congratulating them on their appointment and the reappointment of the existing directors. And, you know, just kind of a form letter, letting them know, we appreciate the work we're doing, and we, as a city, look forward to working with the new board to continue to provide the best service we possibly can as far as healthcare goes to our residents. So do I need a motion for that?
Yeah, so we'll need to make a motion that we bring that forward under Mayor's Business for endorsement.
Okay.
Counselor Earl, move a second.
A motion for a notice for next time around?
No, we'll do it later in the Mayor's Business. We'll write a letter.
I will motion as much.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? We'll bring it back under Mayor's Business. Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Earl?
No, other than, yes, I did have the opportunity to attend my first Natural Resource Forum. It was, you know, fun to tag around all weekend with Blair and listen to people give them shout-outs and whatnot. But no, it was a great experience. I got an opportunity to meet many of the new councillors and mayors from throughout the region, specifically the North. And it was, for a new councillor, a very good networking opportunity, and there was some really interesting content, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other new councillor business? Thank you. We'll move two minutes. We have the Ministers of our Regular Meeting of Council, January fourteenth, for adoption. Counselor Parslow, seconded, Counselor Kemp. Errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And Ministers of our Special Meeting of January seventeenth for adoption. Counselor Lecter?
Business arising.
We'll bring that back after we do both of them.
Okay.
Special Meeting of Council, January seventeenth. Counselor Wilbur, seconded, Counselor Earl. Any errors or omission? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Business arising, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. And just again, a follow-up question. I know we are, as a council, drafting a letter in support of CAP, and I know we have another letter coming today from the other side of... another letter coming today from the other side of that equation. Just wondering where we're at on that letter.
Sorry, I've got that letter completed, and I want to have a hard copy on your desk, and I'll get that during the break. We'll give it to everybody, so you can have a look at it before we send it out. I want you guys to have a peek. So we got it completed late last week, and I said, send it out to some of the industry folks just to get some thoughts and input from them as well, because there were some pieces in there I wanted to validate. So that, we'll have it on your desk here after the break.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding. Any other business arising out of the minutes? Thank you. We'll go to correspondence, and there's the first item. We have a letter from Andrew Gage, the staff lawyer from West Coast Environmental Law. I wish there was a third option that we could do to this. Counselor Javetkov?
I've been trying to figure out a third option. So I'll make a motion that we receive for information.
Thank you. Seconded. Do we have a seconder for a second time? Do we have a seconder? For a third time, do we have a seconder? Thank you. Motion. Counselor Lecter.
I would move we receive for discussion.
I was going to do.
Seconded, Counselor Wilber. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. This is the letter that I'm sure most people have heard that has gone to communities throughout our province, I'll speak to our province, asking us to take on the, as they would call them really, the large evil oil and gas companies that contribute so much to our economic well-being. This seems ludicrous to me that they would take it upon themselves to send us this letter. I think they're very brave to do that to a community that its livelihood has benefited greatly. This is not to say that everything in the industry is perfect, because we improve every day on what we do. But in British Columbia, we do it as good as anybody in the world. We extract our resources. Can we do it better? I think we can, and hopefully every day we think we can get a little better than what we do. But just to receive this for information, I didn't think was going to give it the discussion that it needed. I mean, my personal view on this and the view that I think would represent our region would be one that we send a harsh response to this group, saying, please don't contact us again, would be my view, because as they jump in their vehicle to drive to yet another protest or get on their airplane to come lecture to us about what the bad oil companies are doing is beyond what my words will be able to capture. But enough is enough. We live in a world that depends on the resources we extract. We live a very, very comfortable lifestyle because of it. It contributes to the economic well-being of many of our families that live in this region. I do accept that we can do things better, but I don't accept the fact that they're responsible for all the downfalls in society that these people seem to think. So I could go on for hours at this, your worship, but I won't. I'll call it enough right now.
To me, the aspect, they're not saying, let's kill the tourism industry that would greatly affect Whistler or Vancouver or Victoria in so many ways. They're not saying, let's stop having the cruise ships come in that are loaded with 800 million gallons of fuel. They're not saying, let's end the airplane use, the air transportation use. They're saying, let's go after the guys that are producing this stuff and throw it at their doorstep. They're not saying it's that face in the mirror you look at every day that's the consumer that's driving the bus and the development of this industry and the demand for it is coming from global consumption. It's not coming from global production. So, yeah. Anyway, that's, I'm not going to say anymore. I'm not going to say anymore. Counselor Wilber.
I'm just wondering if, you know, to what both of you said, I was just wondering if Counselor Lecter was maybe making a motion in there somewhere, because I agree to the point that I think I was arguing with these, some of these people at the last UBCM resolution where I stood up against their anti-fracking resolution they had put forward.
One of the things we did do at the RD, because we got the same thing, is we made a recommendation, and we've written a letter to UBCM, that we don't want any further conferences, conventions that we will be attending at Whistler or Victoria, because it's more expensive for us, and it's more expensive in terms of global emissions on the global footprint for us to have to fly into those communities. So if you're going to cut us off, we're not, so the RD has sent that letter. Counselor Parslow, you look like you want to say something.
Well, these matters are complex.
Very much.
And I do think we need to hold our entire culture, not pick on one side of it. I mean, I could argue that our main problem is that we need to curtail breeding as a species to a significant extent, and we need to have an overall population reduction. So I don't like these sort of letters either, but the issues are real, and, but they're complex. And I think if we were going to try to bring people together so that we all have a good action plan that is attainable and not just being selective would be a great move forward for us as a nation and as a world body. But, yeah, this is, I think we should just part it with that. I wouldn't respond to it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Do you need a motion, or are you looking for a motion now? We just are discussing it. We didn't have a formal motion on the table. Counselor Earl.
Thank you, worship. I'd just add to the rest of the council's points. If we are, I mean, I'm fine to just leave it as is and not respond if we do want to respond. I want to highlight that somebody who does accept the science of climate change and believe it is an issue we need to deal with, that tone deaf and outrageous claims, responses, pronunciations like this don't actually serve the interests of the issue at all. They make it that much harder to deal with. So I'd like any response to emphasize that as well, that this is a case of, this is counterproductive.
Thank you. Counselor Lecter.
Just, I believe with the response that you are drafting and we're going to look at, I believe part of the discussion we originally had is that they would get a copy of our response, and that's...
We're going to shotgun that letter out, and so we'll add that in there. So we'll get that at lunch, we'll get that for you at the break. You can have a look at that letter and then...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move to item 6.2. We have a letter from the Honorable Rob Fleming, Minister of Education regarding the premier's awards for excellence.
We receive it for information.
Counselor Parslow, seconded. Counselor Lecter. All votes in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Your worship, would it be appropriate, I'm not, did this go out to our school board?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it'd be appropriate to...
Forward it.
Forward it to our school board, that they could send it out to the PACs or whoever. I think we have some great teachers, but maybe perhaps it's up to the PACs to nominate them.
I would assume that, we'll follow it up. We'll make a call to the district just to make sure they did get a copy.
I'm sure they did, but thank you.
Thank you. 6.3, we have an email from P&amp;G regarding their BCUC application for an innovation program funding that they have to send out now as a direction from BCUC to all the member municipalities on this.
I move that we receive it for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Earl. Discuss, oh, sorry. All votes in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 6.4, we have an email from NCLGA regarding the resolutions package for 2019.
I would move that we receive for discussion.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Lecter. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Go ahead.
We haven't really discussed putting any resolutions forward, but considering the conversation we just had, maybe there's one in there about how we talk about climate change, how we, you know, so, or to what you had said yourself, your worship, about PRRD. So is there something in there that council sees as a resolution to put forward?
Yeah, let's put some thought to that, because we'll have the Peace River Local Government Association meeting as well coming up, I think, in advance of the NCLGA, so that we, as municipalities, all meet in northeastern British Columbia to have the opportunity to have that conversation, discussion as one component of it, and maybe we can put our heads around, are there other initiatives or issues that we want to raise as a resolution to be brought forward and do it on behalf of and through our Peace River Regional District? Or we can do it through the city?
Or even endorsing other communities. I just don't want to see it go away and then have it there, so.
Can we diarize this and then to bring it back in maybe two weeks or a month, and that way we can follow up with the Peace River Local Government Association as well as...
We'll run it at a time.
So the deadline's March 1st, so we'll have...
So we got a month.
Yes, we have a month.
So we got two weeks. We can follow it up with PRRD, bring it back for the next agenda then.
Perfect.
And we'll have some discussion about this, if we want to make a resolution on this previous letter we got from West Coast Environmental Law. Good. So motion to table for two weeks. Counselor Wilber, seconded. Counselor Kemp. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
We all have lots to say, we just need to...
6.5, we have a letter from Brock McDonald, Recycling Council of B.C., regarding their conference coming up.
Receive for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Kemp. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
We could have spoken on that one as well, Charlie.
What?
Glass, plastics.
We have a letter from Coastal, or TransCanada, and we just had the update from Katie. Counselor Lecter.
I would move we receive for information, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilber. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
You having trouble with that?
I'm having a little pecky trouble this morning. Public agenda, sorry. Tab, can I get a hard copy of the front sheet? Sorry, I'm freezing up here. 6.7, we have an email from New Hazleton in regards to proposed recommendation on tourism for the NCLGA agenda. Counselor Parslow.
Receive for information.
Seconded. Do we have a seconder for a second time? Counselor Earl. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. And 6.8, we have a letter from Marissa Jordan regarding the City of Fort St. John High on Ice, Mayor's Ice Carving Challenge. So we've got a little, just before we get into this, there's, normally I attend and a couple counselors, and we've gone up. Counselor Rogers was always the one with full of vim, vigor and enthusiasm to win that one. And so, but unfortunately, this year on the, it's the, well, not unfortunately, it's the Family Day weekend, and so it's a long weekend. And as the director for the PRRD, that Friday, Saturday is our strategic planning session, so I can't go. So I just wanted, if we make the motion to send a team up to represent us at the Ice Carving Challenge, I can attend. So I just wanted to give you that a little headcount. But what it is, is just teams from all, thank you, Cindy, all the communities participate in the Fort St. John High on Ice Carnival. It's a really fun time, and all the municipalities are there. You get these big block sizes, and you get to make a carving and try to win the cup. I think we won it two years ago. So anyway, there you go. What's your pleasure?
With you, I won't be there here that weekend, so.
Family Day long weekend, right?
I mean, I would think if there's anyone able to attend, that it would be worthwhile. I, too, am tied up.
So maybe we'll just make a motion that we receive it for information, and then we'll have some discussion if folks are able to go, and we'll let Fort St. John know if we're going to be able to have there, anybody there or not.
Okay, I'll move for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Earl. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 10:30, you still okay? Don't have a quick break?
I need a coffee.
Yeah, we'll have five minutes, please.
Seven.
First, we're now into reports. Report 7.1. We have a report 1905 from our deputy corporate officer regarding our non-medical cannabis retail store license for Flora Enterprises.
I'd like to move the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow.
I'd like to read it to you.
Yes, please.
The report number 19-005, the deputy corporate officer, re non-medical cannabis retail store license for Dawson Creek Enterprises Limited, 1101A 103rd Avenue, we receive further that the liquor and cannabis regulation branch be advised that council has considered the location of the proposed store, views of the residence, and general impact on the community, and recommends that the license be issued.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilber. Discussion. Ready for the question? Counselor Wilber.
I just have a question through you just up. Is this location where the vape shop currently is right now, is that the same proponent?
So through your worship, it is next to it, in the same building, but in a separate unit of the building.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Across the street from the optometrist there.
On the corner.
Yeah, but I know there's a vape shop there.
Yeah, there's two units within one building. One is vape, one will be, if approved, the non-medical cannabis.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Report 1908 from the city planner regarding a development variance permit for Pacific Northern Gas at 180997th Avenue. Counselor Parslow.
Move the report 19008 from the city planner redevelopment variance permit number 18-04 we receive. Further, the development variance permit 1804, 180997th Avenue, be approved to vary zoning bylaw number 41152011 by reducing the minimum rear yard setback of the C-force zone from three meters to .2 meters.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Kemp. Discussion. Counselor Wilber.
Through you to staff, again, your worship, does this, will this impede any way, like fire lanes or anything like that for our fire department?
So through your worship, this is an expansion on an existing legally conforming variance? Pardon me?
That's expect to a legally non-conforming building.
Yes. So this is an expansion on an existing building, so we have sent this forward to the fire department. Everybody has reviewed it, nobody's brought forward any concerns.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Report number 19013, item 7.3, we have our chief financial officer with our property tax information. Counselor Parslow.
Move the report 19013 from the CFO, the property tax information, we receive for discussion.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Earl. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Go ahead.
I thought somebody would want to talk about this.
It was a really good report.
Counselor Lecter.
I appreciated it.
I'll speak to it. Obviously, our budgeting and the discussion's ongoing. We're going into certain presentations with the public so that we can engage with them.[1645.15] I think there's some, I would say, some substantial decisions before us as a council, would be how I would summarize it. I think when you look at what goes on, the discussion that we're about to have with the public is one that I think is going to be extremely important as we move forward, knowing where we're at, where we have to get to as a community. We live in a community that has incredible services, and we live here because we love it. I think I can say that fairly for the vast majority of the population, and we want to be able to continue that. The report, Flavi, I want to say thank you, not just for this report, but for the numerous reports the UN administration continue to put together on our behalf. There are some interesting things. I won't go through it, it's a public document, but you will note the difference between the heavy industry, where it's gone over the last decade versus possibly commercial or residential. Those are discussions that we're having to see if that trend will continue. What we can do, it is always a balance to try and be able to provide the services that we do in a community, and at the same time, reflect the affordability of the people that live here and our ability to pay. So, more of a high-level comment, I know Counselor Parslow moved it for discussion, was looking for discussion. I wanted to help him out on that motion.
Great job.
Way to go.
Would someone tell me what he said?
I think, to me, there's some real, there's some very, really some nice, I think, indicators within that overall message about our community. And when you look at the average residential, average commercial, industrial assessment, property values, our residents are both, and commercial and industrial, are seeing a real strong, consistent valuation of their properties. We're not going through big swings, highs and lows. You see some communities that are really being impacted by the significant downturn in economic conditions that exist within their community or region. See huge swings within that average property assessment, that that's the foundation for this whole process we go through, because we're based on evaluations of property assessment that give us the ability, and that's the only way to start that taxation process. And our community has been very, very consistent over the years in seeing a nice gradual growth in that, but not so significant that it causes huge swings one way or the other. As Counselor Lextrum indicates, you know, the investment the community's made over the last 10 or 15 or 20 or 30 or 40 years in building a community with great quality of life, great infrastructure, great assets, solid water, sewer, services, all of that stuff were, should be, you know, looked at with some pride that we're in very good shape. It's expensive to operate, it's expensive to maintain, and that's the challenges going forward for us. But I think, to me, that's, I look at that when you see the, on page eight of 12, the existing inventory assessment of 210, and 210 average residential assessment in Dawson Creek was 800 million, at today at 1.2 billion. And it's been consistently growing over the years, and our commercial assessment going from 280 million to 462 million. There's a slight drop this year, but that's the first year ever in a long time that we've seen that. And so to me, that's the investment people make, the largest investment people make. Single investment is their residential purchase of their home. And for business owners to make that investment and build in a commercial enterprise, a commercial building in our property and our community, knowing that, you got the confidence and seeing that it consistently has been managing to stay stable and grow, gives them the confidence, I think. So anyway, I really appreciate Flavi in terms of exactly that, the work you've done and put into this over the last two or three weeks. Since last summer. Anyway, great job, and it's really got some very, very pertinent and valuable information, and that's the stuff we make decisions on, is have good information. So thank you for that. Any further discussion, comments for folks? Motion to receive it? Counselor Lextrum? Second, Counselor Kemp. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Bylaws, 8.1, we have report number 19006 from the Corporate Officer regarding our park dedication amendment bylaw. This is that Chamberlain Park. Counselor Parslow?
Move the report 19006 from the Corporate Officer, Dawson Creek Park Dedication Amendment bylaw number 4399 be received. Further, as the Corporate Officer has determined and certified that the approval of the electors has been obtained by less than 10% of the eligible electors submitting electoral response forms, that Dawson Creek Park Dedication Amendment bylaw number 4399, 2018 be adopted.
Thank you. Second? Counsel, Wilbur. Discussion? Counselor Lextrum?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to administration, we spoke briefly on this before as this was evolving. As we move forward on this and redraw the park boundaries to accommodate some infringements, as I understand it, that have occurred over the years, at what cost to the city is this incurring? And are we recovering this cost from the people that actually infringed on the park area? Or is this on the general tax base?
So, through Your Worship, as we move forward, we will be following our policy that was developed throughout this process regarding disposal of, dealing with encroachments, I believe it's parks encroachment policy. We have identified in the financial section the legal costs from February and previous as far as moving this forward. I believe it's 14,682, and I believe we do, Brendan, you'll have to correct me, we have a resolution from council that will include these costs in any decision? These costs in any lease or any sale are moving forward?
Yeah, any lease that is entered, it will have to receive council approval, so that will be part of the discussion.
Council gives the support, endorsement of any movement of the property in agreement by sale or lease to the property owner, and all of those considerations are then information council will have the opportunity to consider.
If I could have a follow-up question, Your Worship. So, as I understand it, the encroachments have occurred, and you know, it happens. I accept that. We're now taking the area out of the park, rewriting the park boundary. The encroachments will still be there, just on city property, not on park-city property, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Duncan?
So through Your Worship, we have a number of options moving forward. In order to move forward with any of those options, it was important that the park dedication be removed. And now we can look at leasing, sale. Council still has the option to remove that infrastructure from the property if council wants to move in that direction. But right now, it's removing the park dedication and opening up essentially that discussion of what's next through that policy. And I think in the implementation section, Brenda has indicated, we're going to be moving forward and present an implementation plan to deal with each of these properties. And I think there's 34 or 37 properties of varying degrees. Some have some fairly permanent infrastructure, and some have some fairly mobile or non-permanent infrastructure. And so we'll have to look at the policy and all of the considerations within the policy and move forward with a plan to deal with each property.
Okay. I look forward to that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Just interested to know, how many people did file some objection to this?
Brendan?
Your Worship, there were seven.
Seven.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is a question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Zoning Amendment bylaw number 4401 for 1552 Loran Drive for consideration of adoption. Counselor Parslow?
I'm not prepared to make the recommendation, I'd like to have some discussion in light of the presentation received. Is that in order?
Okay. Received for discussion? Counselor Wilbur, second, and Counselor Earl. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Go ahead.
So I basically would like to hear from staff, their reaction to what was presented to us this morning. And attached to that is a specific question, was the notion of Swiss cheesing, if you know what I mean by that, the one offending property that precipitated this bylaw being put before council?
So the, go ahead Duncan.
So through Your Worship, I'll just ask if Kevin and Aaron can come down to the delegation and help me along with some of the questions? So there are a number of concerns that were brought forward through the public hearing, and I've written some of them down, and I'll try to tag some of them off. But one of the concerns was regarding parking and no parking signs removed by the contractor. Somebody else Kevin to comment on that?
The sign is, there was some no parking signs on Loran Drive in front of these units, and they were removed some time ago. And honestly, I can't remember exactly what precipitated it, but they were removed, and I know, but it was removed by our own forces. It wasn't removed by the owners of those units.
So the next question that came forward was regarding the fire department and truck access and that width for on-street parking. So, this development and all development, I believe, goes through the fire department for comment, and we haven't received any comments regarding their ability to navigate through this neighborhood based on this decision? Correct? The next question I had written down was, once we allow this triplex to have a suite, we have now opened the door, and we have to allow all triplexes to have suites. So, part of the reason we didn't recommend a change to the RM1 zone is that would be carte blanche, and anybody within that RM1 zone would be permitted to have a suite. We have created a new zone, an RM1A, and if approved, this would be a zone of one property at this time. And council would consider all other applications for rezoning to this particular zone. And Kevin, any further comments on that?
Yeah, council would judge each individual application based on their merits. But as Duncan said, it does just specify for this zone, to keep it limited to this zone.
1552, when it was constructed, had the suite in it?
That's the same building, correct?
This is?
Oh, this building, sorry, yes.
Had the suite in it, so the suites existed for eight years?
We believe, we believe so, not having the building inspector who approved the final occupancy here, we believe it was approved.
And there's a suite in 1550?
We haven't been in those units.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We also had a question regarding just density in the neighborhood and the type of density permitted within that neighborhood. And so, this would be considered in planning terms, a low to medium density neighborhood as far as the type of properties and the type of occupancy permitted within that area? As far as comments, as far as this fitting within that neighborhood, Kevin or Aaron?
It is consistent with the official community plan designation for multifamily, that mean a density multifamily. You know, someone could put in a low-rise apartment, someone else could put, you know, more duplexes, triplexes. Those are the kind of things you would be looking for based on the official community plan in that area. So having additional suites would still be within that kind of density range.
And then the last question, sorry, through Your Worship, is Counselor Parslow's, and kind of why now and why this one property? It was brought to our attention through the sale of the property, that there was a suite in it. We determined that a suite is not, does not conform with the existing bylaw. Kevin commented last meeting about how our bylaws and our zoning bylaws are stacked, and there's multiple uses within there. However, within the body of the bylaw, it is more specific around what can happen with a suite and in which particular buildings. And so we believed and spoke with our legal, and it is not a legal use. And so it came forward to legalize this use, or to have the owner remove it.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow, then Counselor Lextrum?
Just, is it, so this whole initiative was because you had a non-conforming entity in this one, in one portion of the triplex? And so my question is, is it possible to Swiss cheese a portion of a triplex to try to correct the issue rather than the whole unit?
So through Your Worship, Kevin, I believe we are just permitting this use on one end of the triplex, not the entire triplex, correct?
That's correct.
So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lextrum, then Counselor Wilbur?
Just following through on the concerns that were raised on parking with this unit, and we have to crystal ball gaze, I understand, but should this move ahead, this change? How many parking stalls are required at that unit today? And then how many would be required should this move ahead?
I'm trying to recall the triplex parking stalls, but I can't off the top of my head. I know for secondary suites, we do require one parking stall. So it will be one in addition to what's required.
Okay. I mean, having driven through there like most of us, I'm sure, on occasion, it is a tight fit, and parking is a legitimate concern that's been raised that, you know, I would hope that I could have an understanding that that would be dealt with prior to me casting a vote on the final outcome of this. And I believe that's why we open public hearings, is to get the information and then digest, you know, the information that comes before us. So I really would like that answer before I'm prepared to cast a vote on this.
So through Your Worship, I mean, council can, I'll use the wrong word, table or defer. We can provide some information during the committee of the whole, allow us to pull that if that's what council wishes, or we can bring it back to the next meeting, as far as the bylaw itself and what is required and what is existing.
So, what's your pleasure? Need to have a motion. Counselor Jevakov?
I'm not speaking to this motion. You didn't make a motion.
No, I did not.
Did it have a motion on for you?
I just have, I guess I'd like to clarify, the approval of this bylaw change is a one-off. It's not approving, it's basically to legalize the suite that's there now. So it's, that's all we're doing, is developing a bylaw criteria to legalize that suite. It has nothing to do with anything in the future, and I'm assuming that by legalizing this suite, it's been confirmed that there is adequate off-street parking for that suite, which is one stall. Is that, is my understanding correct here?
So, a couple of questions in there. One, yes, correct, through Your Worship, we're just dealing with the one, and that does not set a precedent for anything into the future. Council will have the opportunity to assess any future application on its own merits, and they're not forced to go along with, just because you've done one doesn't mean you have to do a second or a third into the future if one comes forward. And in the parking, if indeed this suite was constructed from day one, seven, eight years ago, the parking, we're going to make the assumptions, was permitted at the time, and so theoretically, there should be no additional impacts from what it was yesterday till what it will be tomorrow. But Aaron's got the parking requirements pulled out here now, so we can see what that is.
So for triplex units, require one per unit, as well for secondary suites, require one per secondary suite. And that's our parking requirements, so they need two total for this.
So just a follow-up question then. If we don't approve this, then legally, that suite has to be removed.
Correct.
But yet, we've approved it originally through the process.
No.
So, we didn't approve it?
We have no record that it was inspected. Duncan?
So through Your Worship, we inspected the triplex. However, the suite was not identified on the occupancy permit, Kevin?
That's correct. And so, two different things here. So even if our building inspector of the day had approved it, and even if they had noted that the suite was there and that, you know, it was all good, that still does not trump land use. We would still be going through this process to clarify the zoning issue that we have in front of us. So, even if it had been approved by the building inspector, which we do not have that, that does not trump the land use portion which we're dealing with today.
So, if this bylaw wasn't approved, does that mean they have to remove the suite?
Yes. What essentially they'd have to do is remove the cooking facilities out of the suite, because that's what, by definition, creates a separate dwelling unit. So if they were to remove the cooking facilities, then essentially you just have a basement.
So, we're assuming that that suite was approved by the city, by the building inspector, whoever it was?
No, what we're going to assume is that we're going to go in, and we've had the building inspector go in and look at the suite to ensure life safety issues. That's what, because we have no record of the suite in the building file or in the permit.
I'm sorry, I can't, gentleman wants to speak. Counselor Wilbur?
Well, Counselor Lextrum kind of touched on it, and I'm having difficulty really around parking, and it's a huge issue for us in hearing from the delegation that there seems to be overflow parking in the Leupke Park area. And I do know, and similar to what Counselor Lextrum said, I've drove down that street, and you're weaving in and out of cars, so I'm also concerned that those no parking signs have been removed, because we're not talking about vehicles on one side of the street. There are vehicles on both sides of that street, and it is very narrow. So I just really, really have concerns about the parking. We've heard from other delegations about rooming houses, about parking's a huge issue. So I'm just really having a tough time, and I feel really bad for the owner who did not build this, you know, complex. But reality is, something got put in, went through the process that wasn't supposed to be there. And my other concern then is if it's found out that there's suites in the other buildings, do we have to go through this process again to get them to be put under this zone? And again, we're going to be talking about parking. So I really, it's very congested in that area, very, very congested. And so I do feel bad for the new owner, but I'm just really having a hard time approving something that didn't go through the proper process to get put in. I have concerns that we may never know if there's proper firewalls and stuff put in for a suite. We're talking about safety of people, so I'm really having a hard time with this, and I know I expressed that at the last meeting. But, you know, I hear about parking, and I shudder, because we're having issues all over the the community. And so I just want to put that out there. It's, I think I need more information about how that's going to be handled before I can vote on this.
Parking is a huge issue for us everywhere.
It is.
Parking isn't unique to Lorraine.
No, it's not.
It's not unique to Eight Street, Eighteenth Street. It's not unique anywhere in our community. So parking is an issue and that's why we changed through the residential development committee work we did in terms of the suites. In this triplex, we are aware of, there's a suite in one of the other end. We are aware of that. We inspected it and we approved it. Correct, right or wrong?
In, sorry, through your worship, where?
In this triplex.
Yes. In the other end of the?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a record of one and another different unit, not this unit.
That did go through the process, did get a permit, did get it inspected. We're very close, I'm very close here to, we're getting into an issue here that I'm, that should maybe be going into closed.
Would you like to move?
Well, Duncan?
So through your worship, Kevin has a comment on parking, I believe.
So just through your worship, just to clarify on the parking issue, so these particular units have garages and they've got a driveway. A garage is considered a space, a driveway is considered a space. So by the bylaw, they do meet the parking requirements even if they do indeed have a suite in there. So that is in regards to that particular parking issue.
Thank you. Counselor Jevkoff?
I'll make a motion that we move this into closed for, I've got some questions like that need to be answered, I think, before we go further on this.
So I don't know that we can, Brenda, to go into closed, we have to have a specific purpose of why we would go in and I don't think that's clear at this point. And I would rather seek some advice from our corporate officer before I move this into closed. So I think our best is to table it until, or to, can we just table it till later in the meeting so I can seek some advice?
Yeah, there can be a motion to table it or a motion to refer it to a separate meeting or a motion to...
I want to get it dealt with today. I just want to get some advice on that.
We've got to table it until later this...
Thank you, Counselor Parslow, then Counselor Wilber. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Eight three, we have report nineteen oh seven from the General Manager of Development Services regarding our firearms and weapons bylaw.
I'll move.
Counselor Wilber?
I move that report number nineteen dash zero zero seven from the General Manager of Development Services manager regarding firearms and weapons bylaw number four four zero two two thousand nineteen be received. Further, that the firearms and weapons bylaw number four four zero two two thousand nineteen be given first three readings.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Kemp, discussion. Duncan, any, Counselor Parslow, go ahead.
Well, I think initially I was surprised that we needed such a thing, but reading the body and it's really focused around the discharge of arrows and having crossbows and compound bows myself, I know they can travel a long distance and can be a danger to others if not discharged properly, et cetera. So I support the need for this bylaw.
Duncan?
So through your worship, absolutely correct. In nineteen seventy-nine, we didn't see those compound bows and those recurve bows and traveling the velocity that they are now. So this is to capture some of the new types of firearms and ensure that our bylaw officer has the ability to work with residents and ensure the safety of neighbors and parks, et cetera.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
The one thought I have about this is what about the use of air rifles? My air rifle is such a high-part one that it fits under the, you know, I can only get it if I have a firearm certificate. Yet technically, it's not a firearm. It's a, I guess it's an air pressure thing. Should not those sort of weapons, I can kill things from quite a distance, so Peps and things like that, if I was that, of that nature. So should that...
We're so glad you're not, Counselor Parslow.
Glad you're not a city resident.
Kevin has a...
So just through your worship, just for clarification, definition in the proposed bylaw has firearm, which means any barreled weapon using it as a propellant explosives, compressed air or gas.
Thank you. I missed that.
There you go. Further discussion?
Thought you guys would have it covered.
Further discussion? Ready for question? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Report nineteen zero zero nine from the city planner regarding our OCP amendment bylaw regarding flood policy. Go ahead, Counselor Wilber.
I'll move. That report number nineteen dash zero zero nine from the city planner regarding the official community plan amendment bylaw number four four zero three two thousand nineteen be received. Further, that the official community plan amendment bylaw number four four zero three two thousand nineteen be given first and second readings. Further, that council confirms that it has considered official community plan amendment bylaw number four four zero three two thousand nineteen in conjunction with the financial plan. And further, that the official community plan amendment bylaw number four four zero three two thousand nineteen be referred to the Agricultural Land Commission, the Peace River Regional District, the Treaty Eight First Nations, Emergency Management B C and the Ministry of Forests, Lands and Natural Resource Operations prior to the public consultation and public hearing.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Kemp, discussion. Counselor Lex.
Your worship, thank you. In looking at it, I mean, there's some sense within the recommendation. I have some questions. Our referral process as to who we're referring this to for comment on our official community plan is where my question arises. Why would we refer this and maybe I've missed something to Treaty Eight?
Duncan?
Through your worship. Yeah, through your worship. This is just a staff recommendation to include typically the local government act recommends that you send it to the regional district, any local First Nations, if it has to do with school population, like the school district. So that's kind of just one of those basic things lined up in the local government act. If council wanted to change that, it isn't a legislative requirement to refer to the Treaty Eight First Nations.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just follow, I say this with due respect to our neighbors, but we certainly have no input when they make their decisions and I respect their decisions based on that. But we are elected to look after the official community plan, the city of Dawson Creek and so on, and it just makes very little sense to me. So for that reason, I have grave concerns with the referral process we're going through on an issue that this council should be dealing with.
Thank you. Further comments, further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. Counselor, oh, sorry.
So can I make a motion that we accept the recommendation, make a specific note that we delete the consultation with Treaty Eight? Is that a problem?
So is that our policy that we do that? I'm sorry, and I didn't get that clear. Is it just each individual recommendation on our OCP that we do this or do we need to change the OCP in order to make that? Duncan, Kevin?
So through your worship, we're not legislated to, as I understand it through Aaron, to refer to Treaty Eight. But council should note, if I recall correctly, when we did go through the OCP process, we did talk about strengthening the connections and the ties with that. I mean, that doesn't bind you to do this, but that was kind of where this is coming from is that discussion did happen and it did happen with the previous council. So, but that was a discussion at that time. We put specific language in the OCP about strengthening our relationships and ties with First Nations. So that's where it stems from.
Thank you. But is it in our OCP that we would do this under our staff or is it just?
Through your worship, no. It's not in the OCP that we will refer all applications to First Nations or anything like that.
Okay, good. Thank you. So you're making the motion that we delete the...
Well, basically that we accept this recommendation with the caveat that we exclude consultation with Treaty Eight.
Okay, seconded?
It's relating just to this specific...
Yeah, okay. Seconded, Counselor Lex, discussion. Is there anyone else within there that you feel are either necessary or unnecessary then as part of that? Counselor Jevkoff?
Well, I mean, you could question probably all of them as having a, you know, a direct concern about these changes. I mean, they're all to do internally with the city. You know, I mean, it's the flavor of the day to ask anybody and everybody for comments, but it just delays things and sometimes adds to confusion.
Motion is that we would refer, but just delete the recommendation for Treaty Eight. Counselor Parslow?
Well, in the listing here, I mean, I can see ALC, I can see the Peace Regional Regional District, Emergency Management, we're talking about emergencies here, Ministry of Forests, Lands and Natural Resources. I think the rest of, we would, they seem to interact on a regular basis with those.
Okay, good. Further discussion, Counselor Jevkoff?
Just to go over the intent of the changes to the plan, updating the city growth management policies, adding new hazard and risk reduction policies, renewing the focus on natural assets as valuable infrastructure, promoting education, including climate change adaptation into the city planning and reviewing city transportation systems. It's all internal, like within the city boundaries. So like I say, I question the need to, you know, to go beyond the city for, but I guess reducing by one is better than nothing.
To me, the ALC is going to get this and they're going to say, thank you.
Yeah. It just, it's redundant to me. I mean, it doesn't make sense. But I know the government, I know in the Forest Service, we sent consultation letters to everyone and I used to get them from different organizations and I'd sit there and think, well, why, how come I got this? It just wastes time, man.
Further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And mayor's business. And so as part of the Peace River Regional District, I sit on the healthcare scholarship meeting. I wanted to give council an update on that. So the Peace River Regional District has a fund, a scholarship fund, I think it's a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars now and we give two health scholarships for medical scholarships within our region. Thirty thousand dollars is going to an RN program so that we give the fourth-year students who are graduating this year, twenty-five hundred dollars when they graduate and twenty-five hundred if they sign a two-year return of service. We have six of those available, so each student is eligible for up to five thousand dollars. It gives us an opportunity to help some of those students that are local kids graduating and want to stay in our community and we enhance that ability to attract RNs into our community. And they sign a two-year return of service in exchange for the funding. We give thirty thousand dollars for employees within Northern Health that want to upgrade their own educational or skills and qualifications for jobs. So an RN might want to become a nurse practitioner or somebody within the healthcare profession might want to upgrade their skills, so there's thirty there. We give twenty thousand dollars each year to the home care program at the college, Northern Lakes College, so they usually have about twenty students. Upon graduation, successful, they get a thousand dollars each and that's just, so it's just a way for the Peace River Regional District in order to help kind of build local healthcare services to our community. We just had a meeting the other day, last week or the week before, I can't remember when, and so we've got now this year, we had a little bit of carryover last year from the scholarship money that we didn't use. So this year, I think we've got eight or ten RNs that will be signing agreements to come to work in Dawson Creek or Fort Saint John. We're in real critical need of RNs in our community, both Dawson and Fort Saint John and in all other areas of the region. So it's been really good for us to be able to have that and I just wanted to give council a quick update on that. The other thing they're doing in that regard is the RD has given us a hundred and fifty grand. They give the South Peace Health Society seventy-five thousand dollars, which has gone towards the purchase of the Bolterites House and they give seventy-five thousand to the North Peace Division of Family Practice for the resident physician program. And so anyway, it's really positive, I think, for us in the region to be building healthcare services for the benefit of all of us in the Northeast. I was on a conference call last week with CAP in regards to elected officials on Bill C sixty-nine, the environmental assessment and all that process, the federal government are changing the rules and the legislation around that. I got tapped into this through CAP. It's a group of northwestern Alberta mayors, Bonneville, Coal Lake, Grand Prairie, areas like that. They're looking to make a presentation to federal government as well as the Senate on the changes to this and CAP let me know about it. I phoned in and participated in it and I'm going to stay involved in that group if, as much as possible, to stay in the loop on that changes to C sixty-nine. Ted Ryan invited me last week to his, the Incan Event Center's staff planning, executive, strategic planning session and had an hour or so with the staff to give them an update on council and what we're doing and what we're working on. It was really good. Blair covered off the B C Natural Resource Forum in his counselor business. I also attended and had the opportunity to, it's a big conference now, we've got eleven hundred, twelve hundred people. Provincial government, premier, cabinet, Minister Soji from the federal government was there. We had industry, local government, First Nations. It was very, very well attended. To kind of off the side, I got into a really good conversation with the CN representative on two components that I wanted to talk to them about. And that's the benefits of us going to these conferences in my view where we get face-to-face with some of these people from companies that you'd want to speak to. CN had sent us that letter last fall where they're going to decommission the line from Dawson Creek to the Alberta border. We talked, I talked to him a little bit about that, the plans for that, because I think that's a really, really terrific opportunity for us if and when they decommission it, it doesn't sell, that we look at turning that into a multipurpose trail. You could use it right to the border, twenty-five, thirty kilometers, thirty-five kilometers of trail. You could develop into snowmobile, RV, ATV, mountain bike, walking. And I talked to him about the process they go through of decommissioning it and they absolutely will pull the track up, they will pull the ties out and depending on what happens to it. So I think that's, I talked to the mayor of Pous about it because we were talking about through the RD doing a trail, a trail study of the feasibility study from Pous to Dawson. But I think it's just got a lot of real nice opportunities to develop a trail out to the Alberta border even further if you wanted to because they're going to decommission it. And the other thing I talked to him a little bit about was always the facility that they were talking about building, the Fraxton facility in the center of town. Wanted to have some conversation with them about that and, because it stopped the development and I wouldn't mind understanding that a little bit more with them in terms of future plans. And so I had a really good conversation with him about that. Talked to TransCanada, obviously the staff were there and President of Coastal, Rick Gaitman, had really good interactions with Wood Fiber and Steelhead L and G. And we're going to invite Steelhead and Wood Fiber up to do some stuff this summer with us because they're going to continue to develop that process and look for opportunities within them. I attended on Tuesday when I went down to the Natural Resource Forum, the Northern Medical Trust meeting. And so the Northern Medical Trust, for those that aren't aware of it, is a trust that was formed by all of the communities in Northern British Columbia or those that wanted to participate in it. We put the funding into it to build this trust. It's in partnership with the University of Northern B C for medical trust, medical scholarships for the benefit of Northern British Columbia. I think it's represented by almost every community across Northern B C. We have a trust, the trust meets once or twice a year and the AGM will be at North Central Local Government Association. We had an update meeting on Tuesday about the trust and what it's doing. Tuesday also, I went down early, I had a meeting with Northern Health. I've been asked to sit on an advisory board with Northern Health on Northern Health Connections, their passenger transportation service. So I sit on an advisory committee with the mayor of Vanderhoof. We're going to get a couple more involved from the north to sit on that committee with us. It's just about giving input and direction to Northern Health in regards to that passenger, patient transportation network and service they provide. And it was really good to have that conversation with them and be involved in it because you get connected into the connection of passenger transportation, patient transportation for us. They changed the criteria a year ago because it used to be you couldn't travel on it without a medical authorization from your physician, but now because of the lack of Greyhound, they've eliminated the requirement for... for a senior. So, anybody sixty or over can ride on the Northern Health Connection service now without having that medical need. So, it gives our seniors the opportunity of having passenger transportation through Northern Health at a very, very reasonable price. And, and they've really noticed the change in passenger loads within Northern Health Connections for it. So, anyway, it's a good advisory committee to be involved in, and I really appreciate the opportunity. Friday, I went up to Fort St. John, the Blueberry First Nations did their treaty land entitlement open house. Again, I would just like to be there to understand what the implications and what they're talking about from the perspective of their TLE process. And spent a couple hours listening to the presentation from them on their treaty land entitlement. It's, they're more focused around the north of Fort St. John, the Blueberry Doig, and their traditional areas are north of Fort St. John, up in the Montney, Blueberry Doig area. So, that kind of covers off my stuff. We did have, before I go into the other two, Councilor Earl brought forward a motion that we send a letter to congratulate the new appointees to the Northern Health Board. John Curry is our, going to be sitting on the board now for Ben Saunders, so I'd like to bring that forward, Councilor.
I'll second his motion.
So, move that we send a letter of support by Councilor Earl, seconded by Councilor Wilbur. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Did I have any other items before I go to line two? Councilor Elick?
A quick question, and we were able to engage, I think, with Jocelyn from CN on a couple of different issues. You mentioned the Fraxan facility, maybe I misunderstood. It's, it's not moving forward. Is that a result of CN, did you say, or was it just it's not moving?
Just economics of it today, there isn't the demand. And so, to me, if it's not moving ahead from the demands, should we be talking about that development of a facility? And, and how can we make sure we collaborate with CN in moving that facility forward in the future, and finding a location that's maybe more conducive to industrial use, and incorporate the grain handling and all of that? So, to me, I want to have that conversation with CN and.
All right. I think a Fraxan facility would be wonderful, just not in that location for what it's worth, from my point of view.
And, and I think that was the flavor we received from the community, was people were really concerned about the location, not the fact that we're developing it. And so I see that now as the opportunity of engaging with CN in terms of, and I have some other kind of ideas about that. So, anyway, I got the contacts, and when I was in Calgary, I met with Source Energy, who are a Fraxan supplier, a major supplier of it. So, they, I had some conversation with them. So, we are doing some stuff on it. We're just going to kind of pick away at it. Next will be to the provincial government.
All right.
The letters in front of you guys. Thank you, Councilor Parslow, that we had a draft of that. And Cindy and I, thank you. We've been going through a number of iterations of this. And so, if you guys want to have a read of it, Councilor Parslow?
Well, I've, I've read the letter, so I, I, I was surprised that you wrote this, but then I hear Cindy wrote it.
Oh, yeah. No, no, you always take credit for it as the mayor. And I've had input from, from some industry folks who have given us also some stuff, because I wanted to cover off some.
It's a, it's a very good letter. So, that's why I.
Oh, no, I did. Yeah.
You sound surprised.
You've got some enochio going there.
You know, just to put, sort of illustrate this, if I take, I just got an email, I noticed when I got home last night, from Encana. And, you know, about nine years ago, the city of Dawson Creek gave the newly formed Peace River Chapter of the Federation of Canadian Artists a startup grant, as did the South Peace Ordinance. And that got us going, a major organization covering, encompassing Grand Prairie, Satch Smith, Chatwin, Tomla Ridge. And ever since then, this sustaining entity, we get a grant every year from Encana. And we, we, we raise half the money, and they raise the rest for us, just give it to us. Without them, I don't know what we'd be doing. They contribute in immense, so they're really helping not just employment, revenue for the province, but also in local organizations. I think this letter captures it nicely.
We have a motion that we can send this. I just wanted to give it to Council. You guys can have a look at it, give me some input before I send it out. And I'm going to draft a list of who, all we want to send it to, and I'd also appreciate that. So, I don't need a motion now. We've got that, it's in place. If you guys can just have a look at the letter and give me some input later today or tomorrow, and I'll get it out this week. Nine point two, we have, at our last meeting, we had the notification that Bud Powell had been, had resigned from the Alaska Highway Community Society. And so, I talked to Councilor Earl, and he's willing to take it on. So, I'd like to bring that forward, that we have Councilor Earl, Councilor Parslow, part of that tourism stuff, act as our representatives. Councilor Elick?
I would so move your recommendation, worship.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Wilbur. Discussion? Councilor Wilbur?
I just want to clarify. I know that when Mr. Powell was doing this, we had changed so that there was no expense to the taxpayers. So, I just want to make sure that we're putting representatives on there, and this is volunteering their time, and the taxpayers won't be covering costs beyond this.
Part of his annual remuneration.
Remuneration.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And finally, we have a letter from Jason Stark, and we've got this, there was a little confusion, we got this a little late, so I brought it back under Mayor's Business, or into Mayor's Business for consideration, because there's some timelines for them that they need to. The other, so we have a letter requesting, Council extend the ice. Duncan?
So, through your worship, just a little bit of background information. I believe this letter went out to Mayor and Council, but we didn't receive it at administration, so that's why it was a little late getting on the agenda. So, in short, they are looking to host a game April nineteenth. This is an alumni game. And so, just to briefly talk about kind of how that fits within the city. So, April nineteenth is a stat, and the arena is closed. If we were to allow this use, it would be at double time. I spoke with Mr. Stark on Friday, and he's still essentially putting the logistics together, but needs to guarantee the ice sooner than later. And that's why this was added on this agenda, is the next agenda would be too late. So, right now, our policy says that our ice season, regular season is done March thirty-first. However, through the policy, we can allow up to two weeks immediately following the end of the regular season as spring ice. However, there is a requirement for hours to be booked prior to implementing that spring ice, which is fifty hours a week, or a hundred hours for two weeks. At this point, as of Friday, Shante, correct me if anything else has come in, we are at seventy hours for two weeks, thirty-five hours per week. So, we actually have not committed to any ice after March thirty-first at this point. The deadline for user groups to submit their request for additional spring ice is February fifteenth. So, groups may come in, and we may have spring ice, but we can't confirm that at this time. And last year, after February fifteenth, we were short, but just by a little bit. And some of the groups came in after that point and said, you know, it will take a couple more hours. And that got it over that a hundred hour threshold. And so, really, the final decision is February twenty-eighth. February fifteenth, we received the information, put it together, talked to the groups. So, we will not know if we have any ice past March thirty-first until February twenty-eighth. Council could commit to that now. However, I can't guarantee that we will have a hundred hours booked. As far as cost for a stat, if Council were going to consider waiving the fees for that particular event, it would be approximately fourteen hundred dollars.
That includes five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the rect of the ice, and eight hundred and fifty-four dollars plus change for the.
For the stat.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions regarding any other areas.
Thank you. Here, Council, Councilor Wilbur?
It's mentioned in here that the Predators would use some of that spring ice. Have they already threw you to staff? Are they some of the ones I've already said they would like to use ice?
Duncan?
So, through your worship, we haven't heard from the Predators yet?
Predators, unless they run to minor hockey, but email went out on Friday, just to get the ball cool and get it a little bit faster, just to get some more ice figured out.
Yeah. So, as of Friday, confirmed thirty-five hours a week, seventy hours total.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Elick? Councilor Parslow?
Just a quick question, and noting our timelines and the dates that we work under, the dates that they are requiring an answer from Council on, what is their drop dead date in order for this alumni game to go ahead if the amount of ice is booked properly?
So, through your worship, Mr. Stark didn't give me that drop dead date. However, when I indicated that we had missed the agenda, and this would be moving to the February eleventh meeting, he indicated that would be too late in order to coordinate this event. One other note that I, sorry, I forgot to mention, I also mentioned to Mr. Stark that April nineteenth is stat, and that there would be some other competition on that long weekend with the Mile Zero meltdown on April twentieth, and the Easter extravaganza on April twenty-first, and that there were other events planned on the other days that weekend.
Councilor Parslow?
Well, I, I think we need to decline this, as a stat holiday, double wages, unless we choose to sponsor this. Why should we eat this sort of thing? I mean, how much money are they going to raise? Is, why can't they pay for it? If they're going to raise ten thousand, then they can pay for the ice. But I don't see us doing this without articulating the source of revenue for it. And it shouldn't be something that just the recreation department eats this. There should either be a sponsorship, or if this is going to be such a big event, that it be completely funded by the events that happen on this day.
Duncan?
So, through your worship, and I, I'd have to go back through the letter, but in my conversation with Mr. Stark, he indicated that the, it would be great if Council waived the fees, but that at this point, he really needed the commitment on the ice, as he was working his way through the logistics of the event, and needed to ensure that he had the ice available so he could book the alumni group. And he wasn't specific or clear whether it was absolutely required to waive the fee.
It would be my view here that, and this is the difficult part, I'm certainly not in favor of keeping that ice in past March thirty-first, unless we have a hundred hours booked. And, and if they're going to put the event on then on April nineteenth, that they would pay for the costs of it. So, if we can't confirm that we're going to have a hundred hours in, by his drop dead date, then I don't think we can say that we're going to keep the ice in past that.
Sorry, just one last comment. So, our policy would allow us to keep the ice in until Sunday, April fourteenth. So, this would be an additional five days on top of our two weeks.
If we book a hundred hours.
So, if we book a hundred hours, the ice would be coming out April fourteenth. This request is April nineteenth. It's an additional five days on top of that.
I guess what I was saying was, if, if we have a hundred hours booked, I'm good to have that ice in as the policy, that it pays for itself. And, but if, if we, if we can't, if we don't have a hundred hours booked, we cannot tell him that we will have the ice in on April nineteenth, because we're not going to keep it in there past that March thirty-first, as per our policy, in my view. Councilor Jevakov?
So, would it be appropriate then to give him conditional approval based on the fact that there would be sufficient ice booked and coverage on the extension for five days and the double time on the stat? That, then the onus is on him to do the promoting and get that all covered. And if he doesn't, then he doesn't have an event.
I think, I guess to me, what we have to say is, look, we, we, we have, February fifteenth is the timeframe we give to our groups to say, you, you want the ice in, it's going to stay in, but we need a hundred hours. If we don't, it's coming out. And he's going to have to work around that in terms of his drop dead date, I think.
Okay.
And if he, if that doesn't work, I don't think we can commit the ice is going to stay in there, because we're not going to keep it in if we don't have it sold. Councilor Parslow?
I agree completely with you. And so, you, you making a motion, because that aligns with what the mayor's, the mayor said it more articulately than you have.
Well, I'd like to explain it the way I do.
You have a gift for confidence.
So, I'd like to make a motion of what you said, rather than what he said.
Okay. So, we make the commitment to Mr. Stark, but if by February fifteenth, by, with our other users, we have a hundred hours, we will keep it in. And his, this will be his cost, the fourteen hundred or whatever it is for the day. But we can't commit to keep it in until we have that commitment from our user groups by February fifteenth. I don't know if they can do that or not, though, that's the thing. Duncan?
So, through your worship, that's our, that's when they need to have them in. We would be pulling it all together over the following week. So, we will work with that.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Jevakov?
All right.
Discussion, go ahead, Councilor Jevakov, then Councilor Elick?
I'm in.
You put your hand up. You seconded it.
Actually, I think he made the motion, and I don't know if Charlie did that.
Moved by Councilor Parslow, seconded by Councilor Jevakov. I just got to get that clear.
I've got a question there. So, that's up to February fourteenth, or April fourteenth. Then there's a fairly significant cost from then.
Right time to get there.
For the next five days. So, he has to be committed to cover those costs as well. You know, that has to be in that motion.
So, it goes? No. So, we went fourteenth, they're going to have a hundred hours. You're going to have four days. Duncan?
So, through your worship, the policy allows staff to put the ice in for two weeks following March thirty-first with a hundred hours booked. So, that one hundred hours and that two weeks would end April fourteenth. It does not include the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth, when they would like to have their events. And I believe Counselor Jevakov is indicating they would pay for those five days, or would have other groups or have other groups provide bookings? I'm not sure what the request is.
Well, it's up to him as the proponent to ensure that all those costs are covered.
Sorry?
We do not cover the cost of, of ice. Council's recently passed a motion in August to cover the cost of ice at three hundred and seventy-six dollars an hour. However, in spring, it's still, I believe, a hundred and fifty for prime.
One eighty for the adults.
Adults.
And then if you go to, just that.
Okay. So, one eighty.
So, we would be.
We would not be covering costs if it were booked.
Counselor Elick?
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking for clarification. I probably still need a little more. I understood the motion to say, if they meet their hundred hours, we're going to leave the ice in. And I understood it until this event takes place. And as I understood the motion that was moved, that hundred hours was there. That would take the first two weeks.
Correct.
We were going to allow it to stay in the extra week. They would have to cover the full cost of the stat holiday running of the arena for this event. So, that leaves us with five days of unanswered ice time cost that may or may not be booked. I'm not sure if we said there is nobody skating in there, what the cost is to the city. Is there any way to even grab a number of that, Duncan?
Through your worship, I believe the two weeks, we had indicated to Council, because many of those sunk costs were included in our regular season, I think we'd indicated in our last report, two weeks was twenty-three thousand dollars or something, something along there, off the top of my mind, from our council reports. The hourly amount, based on, on ice booked versus the budget, is three hundred and seventy-six dollars an hour. If Council commits to this date, we will go out and we will pound our groups and, and try to drum up more usage. We often consider public skating, if we can fill days, drop in hockey, and also try to book this ice up. That's what we do naturally, try to fill in the voids. But through the policy, the onus is to find that hundred hours first.
Okay. So, I don't think there's clarity on the motion.
I thought it was what Counselor Elick.
So, I think, but I think Charlie and Counselor Jevakov, from what I'm hearing, are saying the two weeks are paid for by the hundred hours, and then there's four days or five days there that somebody's got to pay for, we're not.
Yeah. That's what I.
And I, and I don't think there was clarity there, so I just wanted to confirm that.
I'm good to vote on most, as long as I know what the motion is.
Well, do you mind, may I?
Yep, go ahead.
So, we're clear about the hundred hours? That has to be met. And my understanding was the intervening time between that cutoff date for the hundred hours and the actual tournament, that cost must be met, plus the day of the tournament.
Under, sorry, there wasn't a seconder, but I would just say, under that motion.
No, no, we got a seconder, Counselor Jevakov.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. So, we would put the fifty hour threshold in place again. That would be the easiest way to approach that. So, fifty hours a week for the three weeks.
Yeah. Good. Okay? Everybody okay with that? And then, and then he's going to book it for the nineteenth and pay that fourteen hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Blair?
Just so we're clear, and I understand that, and I'm good with that, uncovering the costs. I think you're going to have to prorate it. It isn't fifty hours. I think we base a week on seven days. That isn't seven days. So, we're going to prorate the hours based on the days we want it. I'm good with that on the motion. Okay?
Thank you.
Phew, that was easy.
Put a item under Mayor's Business. Counselor Wilbur?
It's always like that. So, through you to staff, just to clarify, so the opportunity there is then, for those things you talked about, public skates, or that the groups could rent that space, we're not just putting the onus on this. rent that space, we're not just putting the onus on this, this group to fill that space? There's opportunity there for us to get that 50 hours. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, I'm good then.
Yeah, so through your worship, we will now go back to the groups and say council's considering this three-week period and here's the minimum threshold for hours that need to be booked in order to keep that moving forward. There are groups out there that would like the city to keep the ice in much longer, so I'm sure there will be some interest. We'll update you at the end of February in our committee of the whole.
Thank you. Good. Any further questions? Any further discussion? Counselor Jevakov?
Just one question. So does that give Jason, I guess, the freedom or the, is he in a position then to go ahead and organize this event?
No, because he's got it, we got to confirm in that we're going to lock in, get these hours before he can do that. So Duncan will have to work with him on his drop-dead date and all of that stuff in terms of how we can maneuver and manage that because we're not going to, we're not going to agree to it until we got the hours booked.
Okay.
That's the intent of the motion.
We put it on Duncan's shoulders.
Great job.
We got it.
Further discussion, further questions? Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. Diary?
So through your worship, just a reminder that on January 29th, and Kevin, I have to confirm this, this is the developer meeting on our zoning bylaw update. And on January 30th, there's also a zoning bylaw, good neighbors workshop. So two meetings this week for people to bring forward their comments regarding our current zoning and some of the items that are diarized under the Residential Development Committee.
Thank you. Consent calendar, few items to be released. Counselor Wilbur, seconded. Counselor Lexrum, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Strategic priorities chart?
Nothing to update, your worship.
Media, Austin?
Thank you.
Committee of the whole, do you want to take a five-minute break while we get into committee of the whole?
Sure.
Committee of the whole, report of the agenda. And our first up is our report from Staff Sergeant World. Good morning, Still.
Good morning, Counsel. Thank you for having me. So I'll go through the year-end reports. It's a little lengthy, but I'll go through it quickly because I know you guys are running behind today. So do you guys all have a copy of it then?
Yeah.
Perfect. So first thing I'd like to address is our resources. You may not know, but the Dawson Creek Detachment employs regular members, public servants, and municipal employees. So we have three different categories of employees. We did see a large turnover this year. I'm not going to go over every single one, but we saw quite a bit of employees leave and quite a bit of replacements come in. We did see some vacancies throughout the year. And one thing I want to make sure that you understand, when I say we see, when we had vacancies, it means we, it doesn't mean that we were running with a bunch of holes everywhere. Those holes were filled with other resources. So provincial resources. So for example, we have a five-man provincial traffic unit that was collapsed onto the detachment. The provincial came and helped to fill the holes that we had. So we did carry vacancies, but we, those holes that were there were filled with provincial resources. Just during the short term, to make sure that we were able to provide our policing service and ensure the public safety and security of Dawson Creek. So there were some vacancies. There were a couple holes, but we, some, most of the holes were filled with provincial resources in order to address the resource needs and ensure quality service. This year, I did submit two business cases. One was to the city requesting an additional clerical position and one to the province requesting additional regular members. Those are still both submitted and the results of those are undetermined. As of December 31st, so for the end of the year, we were holding three hard vacancies. And again, hard is the, the members have transferred out and their replacements have not yet come in. Those incoming positions have been named. I know who they are. One cadet actually is graduating today and will be here next week. So those positions will be filled by middle of March at the latest, hopefully sooner, but at the very latest, mid-March. And March 16th is when the last position, the vacant position will be filled and will be at full capacity and fully staffed. So. Some of the crime trends that we saw, so between January 1st and December 31st for 2018, we had 7,447 calls within the city of Dawson Creek. We had 2,192 in the surrounding area. So 77% of our calls were within the city of Dawson Creek, 23% were in the rural area. Compared to the last year, that's an increase of calls for the city of Dawson Creek by 2.5% and a decrease in the rural area of 2.5%. Some of the trends that we noticed just for the period of December, we had a decrease of theft of vehicle calls by 52%. And that's pretty much steady throughout the entire year since I've been here. We had a decrease of theft of vehicles by 29%. Our break-in enters in both residents and businesses are increasing and have been throughout, again, since I've been here. Our increase to business was 111% for the month of December. Assaults, more and more serious assaults, aggravated assaults, and our robberies have increased and they were up by 67% in December. Sex assaults were down by 50%. Drug possession, drug trafficking, a decrease of 92%. That's a substantial decrease. And again, that's a common theme that I've seen since I've been here. Drug calls are going down. Drug overdose calls are down by 87%. Again, a significant decrease and a common theme I've seen since I've been here as well. Impair driving, an increase of 13%. Motor vehicle accidents, a decrease of 4%. Our thefts, which include shoplifting, a decrease of 4%. And mental health calls, an area of concern for us right now is an increase of 44%. And I'll address that later, I'll address that later on in the report. Our calls over the last five years have generally remained the same. We had a slight increase in 2018, but nothing serious. Our, the bulk of our calls for service were property crimes. So nearly half the calls that were going to involve property. 36% of our calls are other criminal codes. That's like mental health, includes mental health. And 19% of our calls are persons crimes, so assault. Primarily, though, we're dealing with property crime-related calls for service. As you'd expect, summer was the busiest time for us. August is when it peaked for us. That can in part be attributed to seasonal workers that are in the area or tourist traffic moving through the city of Dawson Creek. And sometimes criminals just like to work in warmer weather. So. Some of the community policing initiatives that we were able to participate in this year, we do like to, the opportunity to be able to positively connect with people and interact with them in a positive atmosphere. We were able to do 20 dairy classes this year. Each class had about 25 children. We were able to participate in remember today ceremonies in both Dawson Creek and Pouscoopie. We were able to participate in the fall fair. I wasn't here for that and looking forward to being in the next one, but apparently we were there every day and we participated in the kiddies parade. I don't even know what that is, but I'm going to participate in it in fall. We did participate in the Canada Day ceremonies. Another thing I want to participate in this year is the high school grad. I think that's very special. We stood on the red, stood up the red carpet and escorted graduates in to the ceremonies in red search. We were able to participate in the swearing in of the new mayor and council. We were able to participate in the 17th annual RCMP and Friends Christmas Choir. Again, I was there as well in red search. That was a lot of fun. And seeing some of the smiles and from the senior citizens and hugs and everybody wants to shake your hands and a couple of the ladies snuck a kiss on the cheek as well. That was a great opportunity. I loved doing it. It was a lot of fun. Now Can Friendship Center, I was able to go there when I arrived to prepare dinner and serve dinner. An adoptive family, we teamed up with Network Ministries, identified two families in need over the Christmas holiday season. We all donated gifts for the two families, wrapped all the gifts, and we were able to deliver those prior to Christmas Day. So again, some of the community policing initiatives that we, not all of them, but some of them that we were able to participate in throughout the year. Some of the crime prevention initiatives that we've been, we've developed or initiated this year include implementation of the bait car program. So in August, when I arrived, we took some steps to register with the provincial impact, provincial impact bait car program. I think when I initially explained it to you, I had mistakenly said that it was the first time the bait car program was brought to Dawson Creek. I was informed afterwards, actually just recently, that apparently it was here before. I'm not sure when or how long ago, but I'm not sure why it would have been canceled or why we didn't access that program anymore. It is here now. We are going to continue using it. As you know, we've had a successful use of the bait car program. We've had some arrests made and charges are before the courts. So that's a program that we're going to continue using. The break-in enter prevention initiative, so we've had an increase of break-in enters. Those are continuing. We did create and distribute a prevention pamphlet, pardon me, offered several ideas and methods to commercial business owners with intent to lessen the likelihood of becoming a victim of break-in enter. Additionally, the Dawson Creek RCMP offered on-scene security inspections at no cost to provide property representatives information as to what they could do to bolster their security and prevent break-in enters. Someone asked me last time if we'd had any calls. We did not then, and we still have not now. None yet. We were able to participate in a school bus driver workshop. We spent one day with our local school bus drivers. It's an opportunity to network with them, provide them some information on how to contact police if needed and how to react to situational events which may occur during their routes. We also were able to conduct a foreign student workshop. It was a one-day workshop for foreign students in Dawson Creek area. Workshop focused on providing information on domestic laws and assist students with integration into the community. Actually, I myself have a student from Japan staying with us, an exchange student. So she wasn't able to get to that because she arrived after, but I know she would have appreciated it. Throughout the year, we have been in regular contact with the Rural Crime Watch team. I myself have gone to a few meetings as well. We're starting to get a little bit more involved with Citizens on Patrol. We'll be interested in that program a little bit more. Typically, we are able to go to the most meetings. For example, the Rural Crime Watch meeting meets once a month. We are there usually. As far as I know, we're at every meeting. That partnership does assist us in providing regular patrols in Dawson Creek and the surrounding area, provides quicker communication and reporting of crimes in progress, allowing faster police response. So they are beneficial and something that we want to continue participating in. Over the year, over last year, I should say, we responded to 9,500 calls, over 9,500 calls for service. Every call is different, requires a different policing response. Even this morning, I was reviewing a call that occurred last night where we were called because of a moose that was stuck in someone's backyard. And we had to go get the fence open and corral the moose to get it out. So we get calls of all shapes and kinds. In March, we were dispatched to report of a large-scale industrial fire at our fracking location near Dawson Creek. We assisted with the evacuation of 116 employees on site. We also conducted the evacuation of residences within a two-kilometer radius. We provided scene security and controlled access while fire did their thing and battled the blaze. On June 19th, a member was on patrol when he observed a vehicle become involved in a crash. As he arrived on scene to assist, he witnessed the involved driver jump over his vehicle and carjack a nearby vehicle which had stopped as a result of that crash. The RCMP member did try to intervene. He actually pepper sprayed the driver as he was trying to get him out of the vehicle. He was unfortunately unsuccessful in stopping that suspect before he was able to speed away in that stolen vehicle. The vehicle was located a short time later, abandoned. The police dog was brought in and successfully tracked the suspect who was hiding in the bushes. He was arrested and charged. As a result of that stop, recovered a large quantity of drugs, including fentanyl, methamphetamines, and cocaine, as well as large quantities of currency. I believe it was about $17,000, if I remember correctly. On July 6th, a member discovered a stolen vehicle in a rural area in Dawson Creek. During the investigation, the driver was located in nearby residence. He was arrested. Resulting search warrant for the residence was sought and granted, which resulted in the recovery of three stolen guns, one of which was a handgun. They had previously been stolen from residents in Rolla. Ammunition and other stolen property was also recovered. That involved suspect was arrested and is currently before the courts. And you may remember, November 2nd, we were dispatched to report of a gunshot victim here in Dawson Creek at the Husky Gas Station. We attended to find a victim suffering from multiple gunshot wounds. The members provided life-saving emergency first aid while on scene. They also eventually conducted the transport of the victim to the hospital. That victim did survive. A large investigation ensued, not only with the Dawson Creek RCMP, but we received help from several support units such as the Regional GIS, the Journal Investigation Section, RCMP Forensic Investigation Section, and other specialized enforcement units. As a result of that large investigation, two suspects were identified and arrested. They've each been charged with multiple firearms-related offenses, including attempted murder and kidnapping. Those suspects do remain in custody and their charges are before the courts. Over 2018, 2019, we did submit 534 files to Crown Council for charge approval. Over the year, we seized 124 firearms. Those are firearms that were taken off the streets in Dawson Creek. We seized 715 grams of cocaine, 183 grams of heroin, 238 grams of methamphetamines, a large quantity of drugs, again, that were taken off the streets in Dawson Creek. Each year, we set our annual strategic priorities. Those are set in consultation with yourself and our partner agencies and organizations that we work with. We set our priorities based on SMART objectives. SMART objectives are specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-sensitive. There's no sense, no sense setting objectives that we aren't going to reach and that we aren't going to be successful at the end of the year. So we're careful in how we set those objectives and we make sure that we, with some work, that we're going to be successful at the end. We identify milestones and ensure that we can measure success. The established priorities that we do choose in consultation with our partners determine where the RCMP resources will be focused throughout the remainder of the year. So you may or may not be aware that our priorities this year, and I hope that you are aware, our priorities this year were crime reduction, impaired driving, organized crime, and internal communication. Speaking to crime reduction, our objective was to improve identification of prolific offenders, prolific offenders or repeat offenders, and increase the number of curfew checks. We recognize the need to reduce crime in Dawson Creek. Half of the city of Dawson Creek is not out committing crime. They're not out breaking into cars. They're not out shoplifting. It's a small, select group of individuals that are doing the crime within the city. If we target that small group of individuals, it will have a large impact on the crime rate within Dawson Creek. So we target those individuals. We identify who they are. We monitor them and we charge them every opportunity we can to get them back in jail where they belong. This year, the Dawson Creek Detachment opened 91 intelligence files and conducted 73 curfew checks. We submitted a total of 127 breach files for charge approval. Several of those were a result of the curfew checks that were conducted. So again, we have a select group of individuals that are on curfew. They're on curfew for a reason because at night, they're usually out committing crimes. So the courts put them on a curfew. We hold them accountable to that curfew. We make sure that they don't leave. We check on them regularly. And as soon as they do, we breach them and get them back into jail where they're supposed to be. Increase of impaired driving enforcement. Impaired driving continues to be a contributing factor on collisions, in collisions on roadways in British Columbia. For that area, for that reason, it is an area of concern. This year, we received a total of 208 impaired driving calls for service. Of those, 152 were charged. So when I say charged, I mean that they're either criminally charged with impaired driving or they're dealt with under the provincial administrative processes. That's IRPs. Two of our officers were actually recognized as having made the Alexa team, and that means that they each got 12 impaired drivers and charged them. So they each got 12 impaired drivers off the road and charged. For organized crime, we wanted to increase our proactive checks and bar walks. We do monitor organized crime in the Dawson Creek area. And steps are taken to reduce its impact on the city and the surrounding area. Known gang members are monitored and those on court conditions are strictly monitored and enforced. We recorded a total of 72 checks and 41 bar walks throughout the year with multiple other proactive crime prevention patrols documented in high crime areas throughout the city in Pouscoopie. So we've identified areas of high crime within the city and we make a point of being visible within those areas. We keep track of how many times we're going to those areas and I can assure you it's daily and nightly. So the high crime areas in Dawson Creek, we're usually doing preventative proactive patrols to deter crime multiple times each day. Internal communication was determined to be an issue of the Dawson Creek Detachment. For that reason, it was made a priority. And the goal was to increase the number of internal communications to employees. Internal communication was identified. Steps were taken to improve communication over the last year. Regular detachment meetings are being held. There is improved positive recognition and feedback and increased supervision and accountability, which is assisting in improving communication in our units. What you should expect to see in the new year, speaking to our annual priorities I spoke to you about, I'm in the process right now of developing our new year priorities, which will be in effect as of April 1st. So we work on the fiscal year. I will ensure that the council and our partners are included in the process and in the development of our new priorities. Over January, a couple of days left in January, but over February, should be expected, should be expecting to be contacted by me for input on the annual priority plan. So I'll make sure that I line that up with the CDO and that we have a meeting and go over kind of where we think the police resources should be focused. Mental health calls have been rising since I've been here and certainly over the last year. Just so you know, over the last year, we responded to 152 calls for assistance for mental health. As I've explained before, mental health calls can be, can occupy police resources for a significant amount of time. It's not unusual for us to be guarding a mental health patient for several hours while we're waiting for a psychiatric assessment. If it's a high-risk prison, if it's a high-risk patient, that can include more than one police officer. So sometimes two police officers guarding someone for several hours. It's taking police officers off the road. For that reason, it's important for us to take a proactive approach in identifying the cause. Why is it happening? It'll allow the ability to implement new initiatives to assist the community in the area. area. We're currently in the process of identifying a new mental health liaison. I think we've identified one, I'll know next week. The liaison will be responsible for taking a leadership role in developing the detachment's response and unit policy in relation to mental health calls for service. The liaison will be responsible for establishing contacts with the partner agencies in the mental health field and establishing and participating in any related local committees to address mental health and ensure that our policing response is accurate and meeting the needs of the mental health community. So this is a perfect example of what we may want to consider putting in our priority plan to focus on for next year. It's drawing significant police resources. For some reason, it's been increasing drastically over the last year, and we need to find out why and implement some kind of solution to deal with it. I am currently in the process of meeting with our partner agencies to establish an inter-agency committee. Many of our calls for service require multi-agency response. So for example, if we get called or dispatched to a building burning, a burning building, I should say, typically that will involve a response from police, fire, and ambulance. It's important that responding agencies are familiar with each agency's policies and procedures, which will allow a better and more coordinated response, ultimately improving the service delivery to the city and surrounding area. Participating agencies will meet on a predetermined schedule to discuss response plans, network, and establish positive communication plans and identify areas in which we can assist each other. So that's going to occur over the next couple of months, and I expect that I'll be able to report on it later. Commercial break and enters, as you know, have been a rising concern over the past years, particularly since I've arrived here. Dawson Creek RCMP will continue supporting local businesses to ensure that appropriate crime prevention practices are in place. We are currently going over our response strategies and developing them, and as a part of that, I expect that we'll be increasing our downtown presence that will enhance communication and partnership with local crime prevention groups such as Citizens on Patrol and improve our response to break and enters and alarms. That is all I have for you today. Any questions, of course.
Rob, thank you, Damon. Questions, comments? Counselor Earl?
Thank you for your work this year. I know you've kind of stepped into a big job, and we appreciate it. So with respect to cops, I see you've got the mayor and the MLA and their spouses, respectively. How, other than that, how's registration going for that? Has there been a noticeable?
There are some coming in.
Okay.
Yes, well, more than was before. Yeah, certainly, there are more registrations coming in, yes.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know the numbers offhand, but...
Counselor Lechon?
Well, to extend my thank you for the work that you do and all of the staff over there. You mentioned mental health, and I mean, we're not alone in that in Dawson Creek. It's really probably a countrywide problem as much as any. Is there any things that jump out at you right now, or is it too early to ask the question? Do you see things that are contributing? Is it the drug issue? Is it, is there any one or two things you could point to?
Something I've seen here that I haven't seen before is we're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of orders, so Form Four, I believe, from the doctors to pick up patients for medication. So when a patient's not showing up for medication, they're immediately issuing an order which requires us to take someone into custody and deliver them for taking their medication. So that's something I've never seen before. I'm not sure why that's happening, and something we'll have to look into, so...
I wonder if, because we're the regional psychiatric center for the region at the hospital, if maybe that's the aspect of the services that are being provided here aren't centralized and located in Dawson Creek at the hospital. Never thought of that, but...
It could be. Obviously, we want these people on their medication, so I mean, it's vitally important, but...
Yeah. Maybe something worth having some discussion about. Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Counselor Kemp?
I'm just wondering about the bait cart implementation you have here, theft of vehicles. I'm just wondering how many of those were where people left keys in their vehicle?
Quite a bit, actually. So I just reviewed just ten random stolen vehicle files this morning before I came over, and eight of those files were keys left in the vehicle. Two of those actually were vehicles that had been left at 7-Eleven, running while the person, the driver, ran in to get something, and they came out and their vehicle was gone. So eight of the ten files we reviewed this morning were keys left in the vehicle and the vehicle's unlocked.
Usually in the winter months, people leaving keys, or it doesn't, summers?
The files that I, well, I reviewed files that were throughout the year, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Some education, right?
Perhaps.
Educational opportunity and messaging. Yeah, good. Anything further? Damon, thank you. Appreciate it. Great report. We appreciate the information. And next up, we have Corporate Officer. Good morning, good afternoon, welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Nice to have you here.
Well, thank you. Nice to be here. I'm going to go over a few things. Most of them are included in our community newsletter, which was distributed last week. Flavia put together a property assessment time. How does that affect my city taxes? Information, and it's good information for the public, so hopefully that'll be well read. It also indicates there's a public consultation on March eleventh at one here in council chambers. Now, with the added public interest, we might need to change, or council might wish to change that, and that can be done within the budget meeting if that's a desire.
We moved the budget, public budget consultations back into council because we're going through so much work, putting the work into the detail for the public meeting, and we're getting very, very little response from the public. So we changed it about a year ago or two years ago, bring it back to council to lessen the impact, but I'm wondering if maybe council, we should have some discussion about that in our budget meetings about changing the time and the location so we can get it back out in the evening to a location that's more conducive for the meeting? And we can have that discussion in the budget meeting? Because we have to set that notification for that meeting, right?
Yep. We provided the notification that it's at one o'clock, so any change, we would definitely advertise.
Yeah, but we got time for that.
Yep.
Good, thank you, Brenda.
Yep. And other things, there's recycling information in that newsletter, and also kindness meters. I wanted to let you know who were the two groups that were chosen for 2019. There's the Dawson Creek Arts and Wellness Fund, and they provide funding for children, youth, or young adults who don't have access to funds to attend art and wellness programs. And the other group is the Sight Impaired Group of Dawson Creek. They host a group meeting for the visually impaired citizens once a month, where they provide lunch by donation and host guest speakers. So that's, that's the groups for 2019. And the other thing I want to end on is just congratulating Janet Loizel on her retirement. She was here with the city for thirty-three years, and we will miss her. Her last day was last Friday, and we did a lot of work with her even though we weren't in her department, but just want to say congrats.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations to Janet and Shane for her retirement and wish them the best in thirty-three years. Thank you, Brenda. Any comments, questions for Brenda? Thank you. Next up, we have our Chief Financial Officer. Good morning, good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you. I actually, I don't have a lot to say other than this last month, the department has been pretty dedicated on budget and also year-end, because we have the external auditors coming next month. So, and as a result of this dedicated hours, we'll be discussing at 1:00 PM in a few minutes.
Do we all have to be here for that, or can we phone in?
I suggest, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or anything for Flavia? Thank you, Flavia. Next up, we have our Community Services. Good morning, good afternoon.
Barry.
Out with the old, you know, safety boss here at... She's stuck with me. I don't know if many of you know Yinka. Yinka is our safety coordinator, and he's just here to, if we have any questions that I can answer, he'll be asking us, but Yinka's been with us since July, June, July, so just welcome him, just in case you don't know who he is. That is Yinka. So the majority of our power report was to do with safety, so is there any questions? You can start with that, or I can review some things too, because the biggest thing that we're working on is our CORE, which is certification of recognition that is offered through the WorkSafe BC, and we will be having a group come in and audit us in nine key areas over the next year. But are there any questions with that? I can talk a little bit more about CORE. One of the reasons why we like to do CORE is once we become certified through WorkSafe BC, we can get a ten percent reduction, come back to us, twenty thousand dollars, it will depend what it is. So it's really important for us to have CORE, as well, it's important for us to have safety because our workers come to work. We want to make sure that they go home safe, so we want to make sure that everything that we do is safe, they understand how to do work procedures, they understand what MSDS sheets are. All of that information is really, really important for us to have. We'll be working with British Columbia Municipal Safety Association, and they will be the people that are certified in BC to do the audit with us.
You know, I think it's really important, that's a really important point for us, because it's easy to miss how important and how significant this can be to the city for loss of employees as a result of injury or illnesses in the workplace. Not only the loss of productivity and the loss of the ability to provide services, but we also face the impact of that impact on us as the carrier for the long-term disability benefits of that insurance that we provide to our employees when they are off and that financial protection, which carried a big component to us. So it's a really important point, and I don't think we should miss that, that how important it is for us as a responsible employer, but also that so many components attached to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. The other thing that also Yinka did when he came into the department, also, he did an internal audit analysis, basically on looking what he was working with within our department. Some of the three key areas that he's been working on is training, improving our joint occupational health and safety committee, as well as enhancing our return-to-work program as well, and that was in the report as well. And the last thing to do with the WorkSafe that we just wanted to talk about was that we do have a decrease. In the report, it shows there was a fourteen-point-four percent decrease in our fees, which comes out to one-point-seventy-eight per one-hundred dollars. So we were last year at two-oh-six, two dollars and six cents. So that was awesome, at fourteen-point-four percent. That's a decrease in our, in what we pay out, so...
Shante, this is an experience rating, so over the previous, I think it's forty-two months, WorkSafe determines what they have contributed to employees being off on leave due to illness or a result of an injury at work. And so this is an experience rating, and at one point, we were as low as a dollar fifteen, but we've seen significant increase as we've increased our amount of employees. That rate has also increased. We changed the model. We went from using a consultant in the past to having an in-house safety coordinator, which at this point, and based on our last couple of years' rates, seems to be a positive move in decreasing our experience rating.
Good. Counselor Parzol, you had a question?
So the, yes, I had a question about this data. So the experience rate is the amount of money paid out by WorkSafe BC for coverage of salaries and stuff like that?
Yeah, so Thury Rosh, the experience rating, and it's actually forty-two months, but so we are going to receive, or we just received for 2019, our rate will be based on twenty, seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen, because they get it out to us before the budget year, it can't include the year it's in, and so it's actually quite, quite historical data, I guess. But it's based on all of WorkSafe's expenses incurred for an injury or a disability relating to a workplace injury. And, you know, that can go from a day to maybe somebody having a slip and fall and having a concussion or something along those lines and being off for a period of months. And that experience rating, like I said, it's kind of historical. It's seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen for 2019. But again, we're seeing some positive results in changing our model and having that in-house safety coordinator.
So what does that translate into in actual dollars? I understand the rate, you know, like fifteen, it was dollar eighty-three, two thousand and five, two dollars and five, and sixteen, and two dollars and thirty-six.
Yeah, I don't, sorry, Thury Rosh, but we don't have the dollar figure for the savings?
Yes.
Do you know that offhand, Yinka?
No, we don't have the dollar figure for the savings, but what it means is that when we have less injuries, then we pay less bucks.
Yes.
As insurance to WorkSafe BC.
Yeah, so I believe the ten to fifteen percent decrease we would receive through CORE, I think we had calculated a business case on hiring the municipal safety authority and what that cost would be for training versus what we would save, and I believe the savings was around twenty thousand?
Yeah, twenty thousand, depending on the reported, past the simple period for the year, then we achieve CORE.
Yeah, so I believe...
Roughly between twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure the last time I was involved with safety, albeit three or four years ago, we were paying about two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to WorkSafe at that time, based on this formula, something along those lines.
Thank you. Anything further, Shante?
I'll just close up with a few other things that are happening in recreation. As you know, we're working on, it's very nice, we already talked about that. One thing that we did want to identify was, we do leisure access. The city provides five thousand dollars a year, and we break that into quarterly for families that are not able to access our drop-in programs or our programs. And so last year, we had sixty-eight participants, and out of those sixty-eight participants, eight of them were new applicants. And February first is our first intake for 2019, so we look forward to that, as well as we offer drop-in swims, water, the tourney swims, and that as well, as well as your access program. And part of that is also park and play, so today is our park and play event, as we do three a year, and we're a winter community, so we always do one in the winter, and right now, there's about seventy-five people there and said, and thankful for the sponsors that we have is Dawson Creek Co-op, Lawrence, Kinsman, Talis, Tim Hortons, as well as two clubs that provide activities, which is the Dawson Creek Disc Club, who always comes and participates. We're thankful for them, as well as the Bear Mountain Nordic Ski Club. So it's nice to have them there and be able to enjoy the great outdoors, even though it's a little bit icy. And good luck to Barry, we just want to say, and come back to us, and he's gone again, but at least he's still working with Sport Tourism. And we look forward to Ross, he is here on Wednesday, Ross DeBoer, comes from Fort St. John, so we work through recreation, so he's definitely a recreationist, and we're excited to have him onboard, starting on Wednesday.
Thanks, Shante. Anything, so any questions, any further questions or comments for Shante? The one thing that just tagged me, and I wouldn't mind, and it's not for today, but for perhaps the next, maybe the whole, is, can we get an update on the fire training facility? Because it just tagged me on that training piece, and we've had it in operation now for a year, I would think we're pretty close, so maybe we can have the chief give us an update back through Committee Services at our next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin. Morning, Kevin. Afternoon, Kevin.
Good afternoon. All right, I combined both kind of my areas of my department in this kind of year-end report, so it's a little bit bigger, but just wanted to kind of close off. Duncan mentioned the zoning workshops tomorrow, and there's a developer workshop, which we've invited some builders, developers, and some people that we've been working with over the past to come forward with the zoning side of things and provide some input. And then the following on Wednesday is Good Neighbor, which we're just kind of reaching out to the public and hoping that some people will come and write some commentary on zoning Some stats, one thing I wanted to point out is for the 2018 bylaw warnings, just, we went out, we issued eleven-hundred-and-thirty-seven bylaw warnings and no tickets. So we, just kind of an interesting stat, out of the eleven-hundred-and-thirty-seven, we issued no tickets, so that means we've got compliance, we've worked with people. That's kind of how we do our business in bylaws, so we, very rarely do we ever actually have to get down to where we're issuing tickets. So I think that's a good sign, you know, that people often, when they become aware of the situation, they're usually willing to work with us and get where we need to go, so I thought that was a good stat. The building side of things, we had a better year. We had seventy-nine building permits for a value of over thirty-four million dollars. We took in just shy of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in permit fees, and out of all that, there was thirty-seven new dwelling units constructed, which majority of those were single-family, which was a trend, a change in the trend that we've seen in the past, where, you know, in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, it was a lot more of the multifamily rental-type housing, where we've seen that shift now, so it was good to see. good to see. Moving into some infrastructure items, wanted to note that the South Dawson Reservoir is continuing to fill. Last report, we were about 3.6 meters in depth, so that's coming along, that's well above where we wanted to get this winter, so that's continuing on its way. Water treatment plant upgrades are complete, other than a few deficiencies, so that's, that's good news, we're just working through some commissioning on a few items. Roads, just wanted to comment, kind of with the recent weather that we've had, as we've all seen, it's been, it's been a challenge, and it's going to be, continue to be a challenge for, for the coming days. When we get the plus, plus eight in wind and thaw, and we actually saw a significant melt yesterday where we had water coming out of the fields, which typically, we don't see that until we actually have spring, and so that, you know, creates a few challenges. You know, we're not typically prepared for water to start running out of the field, so we don't have drainage channels open that we normally prepare for and things like that. So we did have some, some challenges, but no properties were affected that I'm aware of, and so we've, we've cleaned, cleaned that up. But then with it quickly changing to cold, we've got a lot of ice buildup, sidewalks are treacherous, with vehicle traffic, but water onto those sidewalks and refreezing. Anywhere I looked around yesterday, they were in pretty nasty shape. So I know the crews, we're going to certainly try and scrape some of those main ones with a grader and peel it off, we're going to have to salt it, we're going to have to sand it, and just kind of hope for the best. And depending what the weather does, if we get, you know, a few warm days, maybe we'll be able to get that burnt off. If it stays cold, we're going to be battling that for a while, so certainly remind the public to take some extra caution because there is greater risk of slips and falls just about anywhere you go out there with, with this ice. A couple of quick stats on the water side, just looking at the, at the year for water, treated water, you look at our average dailies and even our max daily uses in each particular month, the highest was, the highest day we had was in February of last year, and that's 6,800 cubes, well down from what we used to see a few years back, where we'd see days, peak days of 8,000, 9,000 cubic meters, so just a change in, that's really, in my mind, related to how the industry operates, and they take less water than they used to, and so there's been a shift. Our lowest day was in December, which typically is always usually Christmas, when everything's closed up, so we saw very low usage. And if we look at the reclaim, it's up and down, of course, and that's, again, just reflective of the industry that we, we serve. Recently, over the last couple of weeks, we've certainly seen some, some activity, the truck fills, and they've been taking reclaim there, so that's good news, but you can see the sporadic nature of, of the reclaim. And other than that, open it up to any questions, Michael?
Just one other item, just pertaining to OCP, and I just wanted to really briefly jump in and, and didn't have the information in front of me, and we, we went through an OCP amendment here earlier, but I just wanted to, to indicate, and our planner, Aaron, talked about it briefly, but we are required to specifically consider whether consultation is required with a certain element of the community and surrounding area, the regional district, any adjacent municipalities, First Nations, Board of Education, provincial and federal government, and council must specifically consider whether consultation is required, and we're going to send it to them. So what we did today is good, good discussion, helps us in preparing those reports, you know, better indicate that catchment area. In the past, it's been a broad brush, and we've kind of kicked it to everybody on the list. As we move forward, you will most likely see some recommendations that identify groups we're not going to send it to, as really their input or their impact is minimal versus the groups that need to be specifically considered. So it, it's not that we develop a list of everybody, we're, we're following the Local Government Act, and we're identifying the individuals on there, and, and we will change now, moving forward, how we send that notification out and who it goes to, just based on new council and, and where this council's position is on that. So just wanted to throw that in there real quick before, questions for Kevin?
Thanks, Duncan. Any questions for Kevin? Councillor Parslau?
Yes, I'm just trying to understand the data here. Building permits, new single-family dwelling construction costs $300,000, okay? So I read underneath that, year-to-date number of dwellings, 37. So I'm reading that as there've been 37 new dwellings, most of them, I think you said, were single-family dwellings.
Good portion, yeah.
Right, so can you help me bridge the gap between 37?
Yes.
With a year-to-date construction value of permits issued, 34 million. So let's say half of those have been completed, is that what the 37 number is, that's over the?
Sorry, I'm just, I think what you're looking at is where you see the $300,000 for new single-family dwelling?
Yeah.
That's what permits we took in December, and we should have noticed that, because this is kind of the completion of the year, and then the low.
Thank you, that's December, then, so let's just focus on the year-to-date. So when would those dwellings be, get put on the tax roll?
So if they were completed in, if they're constructed in 2018 and completed sometime, I don't believe that they would show up on the tax roll until, earliest would be 2019, because they have assessment.
There's the, the deadline is July, so whatever it is constructed and finalized and reported by July, so then in October, they'll be entering. So there is always this gap, until July.
BC Assessment have a look at it in June, July, and then it hits whatever stage it's at, then they would estimate the value of that project at that point, and that's what the assessment would be in October.
So the overall assessment that we're working with, increase, the assessment increase, is about in the $450,000 range. Half of that was new, is that right? I'm just trying to catch up here, we're in away two weeks. Half of that was new, as a result of new construction, and the other half was just increased in evaluation, is that ballpark rate?
I can't, I need to, I can't recall, it's really half, but there was a significant portion of what they call no market change, which is new inventory, would be new constructions, like vacant, become a single-family dwellings, but also improvements, property that was already there had some improvement, yeah.
Thank you. Anything further for Kevin? Kevin, the, the old reclaim, or the old dump, 116th, you indicated somebody dropped something in there that was, caused us to close it a little bit early.
Oh, the, the Sani.
Sani?
Sani dump, the, the commercial one.
So that was being closed anyway, do we know, did the, and are they still on our list?
That I don't know, I'll have to talk about it, certainly check, see if we've identified and then be caught up with them. I can check on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything further for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. And that's it for our committee of the whole, we'll now motion to recess to closed, and I'm going to add Section 91(c) to it for our labor relations or other employee relations that we'll have within closed. Councillor Wilber, Secretary Councillor Kemp, all in favor? Oppose? Carrie, thank you. So we'll take a five-minute break while we recess to closed. Budget meeting of City Council to order for Monday, January 28. Our first item of business is our report 2.1, and at this point, we would like to ask for a motion for discussion. Councillor Wilber, Secretary Councillor Kemp, all in favor? Oppose? Carrie? At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Duncan and Flavia to walk council through the first iteration of our draft budget.
So, good afternoon and welcome, council, to our first draft of the budget. So we've printed out the slideshow, some of the numbers on the slideshow are going to be small, the gallery has a copy, there's some copies out front, council has copies, and that may help, as, again, some of these numbers are, are a little small on that slideshow. So just opening up, just like to talk really briefly about how we, we got here and, and kind of where we're going next, I guess, for council, for the gallery, for staff, for the media. So in November, staff and Flavia created the budget assumptions report. It identified that this budget had some challenges, the preliminary numbers raised some concerns, and part of that recommendation was that we do some strategic planning to review those priorities and identify maybe some areas for priority and areas for review. On November 29th, we held our strategic planning, we talked about the budget concerns and some of those challenges, identified some numbers, although preliminary, and, and then moved into an area of review and looking at areas that we could bring back further information for council to look at and make some decisions in those areas. December 17th, we looked at some of those items, identified November 29th, and really had a lot of discussion about that center of control and, and what could be included in the 2019 budget, and, and one of the best ways to summarize it is, unfortunately, many of the things, we can't do cheaper, we can't cut the cost of the activity itself, however, we have the ability to cut the amount of the service we provide. So I can't change the price to cut the grass, but I can get direction from council on how often we actually do that. And so as council's wrestled with those decisions and, and that information that's come forward, and again on January 14th, and again on January 17th, we bring ourselves to where we are today with our first draft of the budget. That includes a number of different changes and has a bit of a different look than previous budgets that we have encountered. As we move forward, January 28th, today, we take a look at this first draft of the budget. Flavia and myself will, will walk council through some of the key highlights contained within this amazing report that is filled with a lot of data and a lot of information. From the, the first draft, council really provides that preliminary direction, there may be areas the council would like some more information in, which we would bring back at the second budget meeting. As we come back February 25th with that second draft, that includes any information council's asked for, any changes that council has made today, we also bring back updated numbers through the Peace River Agreement and updated numbers through BC Assessment. And as council and the media and the public learn about the, the budget, council then gathers those views individually and may have some other concerns that come forward or other questions that come forward at that second draft, which, again, council has an opportunity to make changes to the draft as we move forward. March 11th is our public consultation, it's currently scheduled, which council approved the budget schedule earlier in, in 2018, it's currently scheduled for 1:00 PM at City Hall. However, we are receiving some feedback as we move forward from the public, and council may want to consider changing this meeting from 1:00 PM in the afternoon on March 11th to a different venue in the evening, to allow for that public engagement. So we have tentatively, prematurely tentatively, reserved the Mercer Hall, as it was one of the only facilities available on that date, and if council so chooses to change that time, we have that location available to us.
Co-op Mercer Hall?
Co-op Mercer Hall, sorry, my mistake. So through the public consultation, members of the public, we once again walk through the budget where we're at at that point with any changes, and the community and, and the public have an opportunity to provide feedback, ask questions, at which point, at the next budget meeting, council may decide to make some changes, again, to that draft, and that's April 8th, and we'll call it the third draft, and it will also include the five-year financial plan. With all of this heading to May 1st, first three readings of the bylaw, financial plan bylaw, and May 3rd, adoption of the financial plan bylaw, which point we submit it to the ministry. So there is our, where we've been and where we're going here in the next couple of months. Have I missed anything, Flavia?
No.
Perfect. So we will move on to aspirations. Flavia is going to be your, your lead on this presentation, and I'll be the peanut gallery with a couple of comments on the side.
When, do you want that as a separate motion for the proposed to discuss changing that date for the public meeting? Do you want to do that after we do this as a separate motion?
At any time, it can be.
Okay, good. We've just got to make note of that to remember too. Thank you.
Right, good afternoon. So I will be walking through the key aspects of the, the budget report for draft one. I think the first thing important to highlight here is the council aspirations for the 2019 and 2023 financial plan, which was based on the strategic meetings and the presentation of the assumption report. So although it's in a draft version, the, the highlights of the aspirations are sufficient resourcing of capital budget to meet the cost of maintaining and replacing core infrastructure, reduction in the use of the Peace River Agreement funds for operations purpose, charts for water and sewers sufficient to cover the total operating and replacement cost, taxation at levels sufficient to meet communities' aspirations for services and amenities, and decrease costs for servicing the community's debt. So taking this in consideration, that's how we put together the budget for 2019. So as part of the exercise to understand the, the budget, I created this table where in the center, oops, sorry, here in the center is kind of a summary of how the activities we do. So where the money's coming from, which is our operating revenue, capital revenue, and some money coming from PRA, right? Where the money, where we are spending, which is operating expenses, capital expenditures, and then some transfers that we do between reserves, right? And the ending result is that to reach a balanced budget, where all the expenses we have, we have sufficient revenue to cover it. And then at the corner here, it's about reserves and accumulated surplus, which historically, we have been using those amounts to balance the budget. So the goal is kind of actually saving here to send to the reserve instead of taking from the reserve and putting here to, to balance the budget.
So, and I'll just highlight on this particular model, it does not include any tax increase, does include the BC assessment change, a $33.8 million operating budget, 1.3 million reduction in, in operations, and a $6 million capital program, which would result in, in that center, $300,000 deficit in capital at the end of the year. So this is essentially our, our starting point before recommendations in this report.
So where do the money come from? This side from the operational side, if you see, 39% actually comes from our property tax, the municipal portion, and the, the second major one is the PRA, the, the Peace River Agreement, which represents 37% of the total operating revenue, and then followed by granting dues and fees and charges and, and other government transfers. So, and how we were spending that? Here, we, there are two, two levels of breakdown, we have per function and we have per services. This is per function, so when we talk about salaries, contract materials, it does include the portion of water and sewer here, but overall, it relates to operational activities in these three funds. So if you see our major expenses, actually, it's coming from salaries, wages, and employee benefits, and then followed by contract services, and then so on, so on.
So just to add in, we, we don't have the by function included, but on page 14 of the report, it articulates kind of where that money will, will go. Protective services, 9.1 million, community services, 8.4 million, transportation services, 6.6 million, general administration, 4.3 million, environmental development, 1.5 million, waste at 1.2, and cemetery at 244,000. So, we did intend to have a slide on that included in here, however, uh, we missed that, but it is in the report on page 14.
I, I just, um, if we may just go back to where the money will come from, um, if I can, just very quickly, I just want to make a, a comment. The, uh, reduction in other government transfers of the, uh, change this year, the full change of the impact on 911 services that we used to receive that, uh, funding from the RD and providing that service, and they moved that to a centralized model through North Island 911, which impacted us unfortunately, John. Um, we should, and maybe just make a side note on that if we can through the budget process to find out what that reduction in the overall contract to North Island 911 will have on our residents and the taxpayers in Dawson Creek, because we will be paying less for that service through, um, the regional district, and there will be a corresponding savings to the regional district requisition amount to our residents. We should ju- there's a delta there. There is going to be a savings to the residents. We should just understand that, because there, there'll be a positive there as well. It won't be 160, but there will be a positive. So, anyway, just, I just thought of that when I saw that, that. Thank you.
So, as a result of, um, the strategic meetings, that we had a series of strategic meetings, um, so we presented the numbers to council and, uh, there was one of the needs is, um, increased revenue, but also reduce the expenditure amount. And so, a whole exercise was done where council asked us, uh, listed for us 46 initiatives, which include the revenues and expenditures, uh, and we, through those meets, identifies those that are short-term initiatives and, uh, what's the impact of those adjustments for this year budget? And, and there is a list, um, where we talk about the major one is, uh, reduce park maintenance standards by, uh, 400,000, which is maintaining horticulture as a priority for the remaining funding. Uh, we have, um, review of vacant positions where we remove funding the project manager position, half of the building inspector position. So, we start saving to, to our current budget of 153,000 approximately. Uh, we also, um, suggested the, uh, the council suggested the reduce of library budget by 10%. Some grants and fees for services of other organizations had been, uh, reduced or eliminated. Uh, we reducing half the portion of the community grants that we, as a city, has been providing from 25,000 to 12.5. Um, also, um, we eliminated, uh, uh, Kiwanis Trade Show and, uh, other grants provided. So, as a total savings from those grants is 38,400. Uh, we also reduced portions of, uh, recreation programs up to 20,000. Uh, we reduced the use of consultant services in 43% comparing to the previous, um, budget. And, uh, reduced administration budget by 7%. This is, uh, still outside from the, the travels and consultants. So, as you can see, there is a series of items that we are taking consideration in this 2019 budget as part of a reduction on the strategic planning.
Uh, and I would just note again that this has been ongoing over, over, you know, essentially since November with council moving through this gathering information and, uh, really focused on what changes could be implemented for 2019 and, and savings or, or revenue realized in 2019 impacting the budget.
So, the total savings right now is 1.3 million, but some of those expenditures, they are not fully realizable this year. So, you, you see, uh, um, an increase on this deduction in the following year, 2020, when it's going to be fully realizable. So, when we talk about 2019 capital projects, uh, we went through an exercise with urban systems where, um, we, they collected, uh, some of the projects that we should be working the next 10 years, and then for 2019 identified six, approximately 6.04 million in, um, facilities, paving sidewalks on the general side of capital that would be important to, uh, go through. So, the question is, when we talk about budget, is how are we going to fund that? So, right now, without any tax increase and, uh, assuming, uh, uh, the, the current number available, so we would be financed about 5.01 million through the PRA, the portion of PRA agreement that would be allocated, which is about 34% allocation, uh, from the PRA. And then, uh, portion from grants from gas tax, 578, but we still will need to use 298,000 from the accumulate surplus, which is, uh, something that we have been doing before. And, uh, that was one of the concerns of avoiding going to the reserves to try to, to fund it.
So, through that capital program, there's a number of, uh, projects identified. Council has a binder that gives you the background information on each of those projects, but if there are any, any questions around those projects, we could, uh, answer those?
Well, I think the only thing we did last year in council, or probably will raise this, is, um, as we get, uh, closing in on this, um, we really gained some, uh, benefits of getting some of those capital programs approved as soon as possible to get the tenders out or rather than waiting until May till it's approved. And I think that's another, uh, discussion we should have in terms of giving administration the ability to move forward with the paving or the sidewalks or some of those capital projects to ensure that we're not starting them in July, but get them started as soon as possible.
Okay, granting as well is very beneficial.
All right, so then going back again to this background, which is exactly the same, then we try, we come with some suggestions about proper tax increase, because we already worked with the reduction of, um, the expenditures by 1.3 million. And so, where, where is the opportunity to be able to balance this budget without using the reserves? And, so, the first suggestion was, uh, recommended the tax rate increase of 2.5% of the MIA rate. So, we still would assuming, uh, the assessed value of, uh, VC assessment separated from this increase, because again, uh, from that property tax information provided the regular meeting, the majority of the increase coming from VC assessment was from new, uh, no market change, which was really new constructions, improvements. So, a small portion of that was resulted off market. So, with a 2.5% increase would generate, uh, uh, 394,000 addition, which 169 would come from residential and then 200,000 from, um, commercial, and the rest break down between other classes. And by assuming this increase of 2.5%, and I don't know, would like to-
Yeah, just one other comment. That does not include flat tax. The numbers on the, uh, recommended tax rate, 2.5 scale, does not include the flat tax.
No, yes, it's just the, the real portion of municipal tax. But, so by doing so at 2.5%, uh, we would be able to increase the rate of allocation from PRA, which was 34%, now to, uh, approximately 37%, which is, uh, 5.4 million out of that 5.01 million. By doing so, you are now transferring for more money to your capital expenditure, and then you eliminated that deficit that was created on the, on the capital portion of the, of the puzzle. So, right now, we would have a surplus of 13, 14,000 on the operational side, so you're actually sending money to reserve, and then you also be sending money, 100, 116,000 to the capital reserve. No need of use of accumulator reserve in this case.
Right, can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
So, earlier, I asked you about the increase, uh, in the previous slide, the 400,000. Did you have a chance to, to break that out? What was new, what was increased?
Yes, so, um, so coming, coming from the 294, so, um, I don't have the break of debt from the portion that's coming from the new. I do have a break from the 415,000, which is point 40. So, the, going back, um, that represents 1.82% MIA rate increase, the 415,000 as a result of VC assessment. Point 46% of that, which would be equivalent about 72,000 out of 415, is market related. The difference, 344,000, is completely new inventory, improvements, new constructions. So, it's not directed affect to the folio that was available in the year before.
Right, so if I make a team?
Yes.
So, that's a bit revelatory to me, because I thought it was about 50/50. So, thank you very much. So, basically then, to, for all sakes and purposes, the assessment overall, although some people go up and some go down, is, is pretty constant, which is good in a sense it shows some stability in, in our community. And so, it's important to realize that that is not therefore, um, a, already a tax increase for the majority.
Exactly.
In fact, it's, uh, quite a small group and that might be offset by some going down, so it's where the assessment is relative to the market. Because one of the overall things that drives me in my consideration of tax rate is that we have, as you have put early, somewhere else in your report, we've been balancing budgets by dipping into reserves, and those reserves have gone down and down and down. We need to, in a sense, to try to replenish that, because you don't know when you're going to have some major issue that you need to be able to dip into that. So, I'm all for reserves. The other factor driver here is also, I've been told, and my own computation is aligned with that, is that just to keep up with inflation, we need a between 2% to 3% increase in revenue just to keep up. We, we have a lot of union contracts which have already been agreed to, provincial sort of stuff that we need to pay. So, we have that driver going on as well. So, the 2.5% in my mind is just keep, us keep, keeping, uh, up to inflation, just to meet largely compensation costs.
Yes, yes. And then I also would like to add something. We did a, a pretty short exercise with row by row to understand the impact of all those changes, right? It's like how, how, uh, what's the representation of who's going to pay over 300 or over? So, I can say right now, for 2.5% increase, we have from the total residential class only, when we talk about, um, numbers of rows, 35% of the rows, you actually pay less taxes than what they paid in the year before. How relates to their assessed value, right? So, they are paying less tax than the, what they paid before, either with this 2.5% increase. And then we're going to have 52% paying less than 100, $100 increase in total folios. So, when we talk about, uh, increase on taxes, it, it's important to emphasize, it's not everybody. It's just that in the average compared to VC assessment, if they are above the average, they are the ones that's going to get the hit, but if they are under the average, that's what exactly represents, is less than 100. So, it's just statistics I would like to include.
So, just over 10% would be paying more than 100?
Yeah, exactly. So, then we did also, we put two other options, a 2% increase, which then would result in a 315,000 increase versus 394. And, uh, this increase is still would bring us favorable and no need of a reserve, but we're going to have a less portion on the, on the saves, on the surplus on capital and operational, in case of changing in, for example, assessed value, which is still in progress, in case of changes in the PRA, which, uh, in the PRA agreement, or any other factors that may contribute to the, the change.
I think just a good, a good point right now is, most recent discussion with VC assessment indicates that that 415,000 is probably going to change, decrease by about $100,000, we believe, just most recent discussion last Friday or Thursday before the, uh, the budget, or after submitted. Pardon me?
Yes, exactly. Yes, there was a, so you see, as part of the new inventory and the way that they assess it, the one of the, the main item in the commercial side, which was about 4.5 million, was a farm that they assessed as a commercial, that moved from farm to commercial. And then after challenging and asking, can you please give them a little more information? How did you build up that? Then now they come back and say, no, that's still a farm, is not commercial. So, there is a result of this dropping, so, just to be aware.
So, that's VC assessment on, on the Peace River Agreement side, although very preliminary, we budgeted 14.7. Last year, we received 14.9, and it looks, uh, at this point in draft that we may receive a little over 15. So, uh, also a positive note on that as well, but until we have the final numbers, we don't hang our hat on that.
Yeah, it's still in draft version, so.
We hung our hat on it when we lost a million two years ago.
Correct.
All right, so.
Your hat.
And also, we did the same exercise using 3% increase on the MIA rate, which would bring us 473,000 additional. And, uh, again, that would be favorable for us, um, in, uh, be able to increase a little more the allocation of PRA, 5.5 million, and have some surplus on the end for operational and capital that would actually feed your reserves. So, how do we, the, I don't know.
You're good.
So, regarding to the impact of PRA allocation using the same, the 2%, the 2.5 and 3%, so one of the goals also discussed in the strategic meeting is gradually increasing the rate of allocation from, uh, operational to capital. So, and, and also, I do have a deadline, we do have a deadline to send the PRA report by now on January 31st. So, I definitely need the position here to be able to prevent.
She raises that gently.
So, considering the three options, like I said, if we go for a 2% increase, we would be able to actually move 5.3 million to capital, which is about 36%. Uh, we also discussed in the previous meeting, okay, is that servicing considering, uh, operational or capital? For the purpose of the PRA report, it actually adds on the capital side. So, we would still be treating as a capital allocation. How we're going to determine that is just that in the presentation of the PRA, then that services will be added there, which then represents a 51% in total. If we do a 2.5%, we'd move in then a 5.4 million, increase to 37, and then move it to 52%. And then 3%, you don't have so much increase, uh, on the amounts, just 5.5, but you can see gradually in the following years, uh, a gradually increase on allocation of the capital, um, portion. So, these are the suggestions.
Just some, some final thoughts before we move into water, just on that general operating and capital.
I have some other question.
Yeah.
Do you know, I mean, this is where council expert and I, I think we, we agreed upon early on, the vulnerability of the municipality. on, the vulnerability of the municipality, should the P R A go down, is we still have to pay our debt. There'll still be a draw on our operating budget. So what's the rationale whereby you can use the debt payment as a capital as it relates to affording, reporting to the ministry? It seems to be a disconnect.
So, sir, your worship, it's, it's required that we include it as capital. That's how they like to see it reported?
Yes, yes.
That's their formula, their model? That's how they like to see it reported to them?
Debt's, you only can use debt to improve, to build, on capital. You can only borrow to build capital, so then you couldn't, you couldn't borrow money to put into your operating. So if it's used for capital, then the P R A is intended to be used for capital.
Blair?
I guess, just following through a bit on that, I mean, the issue historically and as it is today under the law, municipalities are mandated to balance their budget by law. You can't deficit finance. So what's occurred, and this is, I'll give you Blair Exter's view as a counselor, is over the years, we haven't borrowed money to balance the budget. We've extracted revenue from the fair share revenue or surplus to balance our budget in the city of Dawson Creek. Our approach that we're taking is to try, and I won't speak for council, my view and the discussions we've had, I think, are trying to move the fair share revenue out of operations over to capital. Right now, it's a significant, significant portion of fair share revenue is in our operating budget day to day. If for some reason that was ever to disappear, heaven forbid it did, but it is at the whim of a stroke of the pen with cabinet, we would be in a position to not talk about a 2.5% increase. It would be a far different discussion we'd be having today. So the work we're doing is not achievable in one year, in my mind. This is a five to 10-year turnaround for the city of Dawson Creek to be able to reallocate the fair share funding back to capital. And if we are to keep portions of it in operations, an argument, at least in my mind, and I've come to accept this, could be that we incur X million dollars of capital investment, our debt payment is 2.23 million dollars, for example. An acceptable thing would be to say, use 2.23 million dollars of fair share revenue to make our debt repayment in the operational side. Everything else can go to capital. I mean, that's the discussion we're having here, that's the discussion I'm sure we're going to have with the public as we move forward, because it is not easy. If, a lot of work goes into finding 1.3 million dollars, and I can tell you a lot of work, let alone finding 11 million dollars. So if you wanted to multiply that in your head to say, how are we going to do it? Man, I encourage everyone that's a member of the public to turn their head to that, and if they got ideas, that's what we're here for. But it's, it's a daunting task. And like I said, this is not a point your finger moment. This is, we live in a town that has great services, and we have developed incredible assets that we have. How do we maintain those and maintain the sustainability of them for the next five, 10, and 50 years? That's the discussion we're having today. That's my little budget speech, your worship.
Council Jevakov?
So when we, originally, we're talking about reducing the draw on P R A for operations. With these, any one of these three scenarios, are we accomplishing any reduction in operating cost being taken from the, from the P R A?
So through your worship, and I'll just confirm this with Flavia, the original budget assumptions report indicated, in order to balance the budget this year, we would be looking at 24% allocation to capital from the P R A. So we are now looking at 34, 36, and 37, or something along those lines. So we have increased from that original budget assumption. I would have to go back and look on the history as far as what we've indicated in, in capital previously, minus debt servicing, but it is an increase from budget assumptions.
Right.
I guess I was more concerned about compared with 2018, 2017, 2018. The budget assumptions are all to do with the current budget process. So from 2018, the percentage that we were using for operations, is that projected to be reduced with any of these scenarios?
Comparing 2018 versus 2019, yes, it will be, will be lower than what was reported in 2018. And that was one of the points where we brought for attention, because historically, remember, we are, together with the debt servicing, we are allocating 60% to capital and 40% was operational, and that was the year when it turned. So then now became 60% operational and then 40% capital. So it's still low compared to the previous years' allocation.
So we're going backwards?
No, no, we are not going back. What happened is that we are now reducing the reduction that we are expected to carry this year. So last year, we are expecting, we originally said that we would be moving 6%, 60% to capital allocation with debt services included. However, when we did the budget assumptions, then that dropped to 40%. So now we came back through the resolutions and then through the strategic plan, and we managed to bring to 50, 51, 52% versus what was 40% expected if we would not do anything. So there is an improvement, improvement versus the original planned budget for 2019, but it's not an improvement comparing to what we reported in 2018.
Okay. And a $5 million capital project budget last year in 2018, approximately?
Is it, was it, you mean total?
In total?
In total, was it 10 million, sorry, 13 million new projects, 11 million carry forward. So it was 24 million projects in?
In 2018?
In 2018, yeah.
Okay. Further questions?
So just a, a quick summary as we move into water. The alternatives in front of you balance that budget. They move away from utilizing the accumulated surplus, which we have done in the past. And much of that accumulated surplus you see in the bottom right-hand corner of, of your model is really restricted. You have airport projects in there, you have carry forward capital in there. I'm on the previous slide, sorry, but much of that is restricted. So we really don't have the accumulated surplus that we've had in the past in order to prop up our capital program or offset any deficit through our operational or capital budgets. Outside of increasing taxes in order to balance this budget, we can utilize that accumulated surplus is always an option to council, it's not recommended. You can reduce operational budgets, or you can reduce your capital program in order to balance that budget. I will say, with 5 million in, in roads and sidewalks through your $6 million capital program, you're fairly lean already in your capital programs.
And I just want to go back to that point about last year in 2018, 23 million, 8 million was the water reservoir, they come from reserve, right?
Yeah.
So you're down to 13, and the carry forward, it seems to me, we only spent 3 million on paving last year.
Yeah, if I recall, much of the, I think there was a lot of restricted, and there was carry forward, and, and our program was fairly, fairly similar in actual new projects.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm moving to now water operational. So we're doing exactly the same exercise to try to understand what are my, where the money's coming, oops, where the money's coming from, the operating side of the revenue. And that's where we have the meters, the sales of meters, infrastructure charts, bulk water, pool scoop sales. And then on the side of capital revenue, we do have some grants still from projects that we are carry, carry forwarding. We have D C C also for two projects planned for these years to be using. And then the, where the money is going for the expenditure, which is about 5 millions, including the debt servicing, and then a project 1.4 million for new projects and 1.7 million carry forward. So on the revenue side of capital, 1.1 million plus 400,000 is actually to cover the carry forward, because it's part of the project of carry forward. One thing I brought as attention for the, on the budget assumption is that we would be using infrastructure, and that's the reason why we do collect infrastructure, to exactly fund the capital projects. So what's happening here right now, after sales projections and revision of the numbers, we actually are removing zero infrastructure charges for capital. We are using 100% of the infrastructure charges to cover our operational expenses for water, and still we'll be in a deficit of 153,000 on operational side. On the capital side, because we are having some of those grants and D C Cs relates to the carry forward, it's generating a positive surplus here of 98,000. However, when we come to the reserves and use the carry forward, we actually have an ending deficit of the accumulated surplus for water capital reserve of 281,000. So then we turn the reserves now in deficit if we don't do anything with the water operational. So as?
So a couple notes on this. This is a little different than the budget assumptions that council received in November. We had included a $500,000 amount received from other government transfers, I guess. That was a one-time amount, not annual, and that's why we've seen this shift from the budget assumptions report.
Yes, the 500,000 was included in the prior year, five-year plan when it was built up. So in the revision, we identified that was an additional revenue that was not there. So how, how can we improve this situation? How can we minimize the impact of a deficit in the reserves or the deficit in the current year operation? We have been discussing, and as part of the resolution back in November 2017, council asked us to review the, the water rates, and it's, it's going together with the, the exercise of the budget. So the report for the water, they suggested the water rate increase is not read yet, but this is the extract of some of the items that will be in this report. And one of them is to increase the metered rate from 168 in 12.5%, which is pure inflation from 2010 until September 2018. That's pure inflation, no, no, no other extra addition on this, on the rate. So from 168 to 189 on the metered sales, we would be able to generate 283,000 increase on revenue. The other thing we are suggesting is that for the infrastructure charge, so infrastructure charge for water, we also, we have not changed since back in 2010. So the idea is for SURE, we changed it recently. We changed it in 2015, and then we revised it in 2017, if I'm correct, right? So the suggestion here is that bringing the infrastructure charge rate to the same rate that today we charge for SURE. So then would generate an increase of 582,000. By doing so, we would be able, I don't know if you can do that. By doing this exercise, we would be able then to reduce, we would actually generate a surplus in operation and in 6 to 1,000, and transfer 1 million from infrastructure charge. So now you are bringing money from infrastructure charge for capital purpose, and then you'd close your water capital reserve in surplus, not in a deficit as it was before. By doing so, 85% of your capital project from the current year, you'll be funded by the infrastructure charge, and 95% of your debt services, you'll be funded by the remaining portion of your infrastructure charge. So, yes.
I was just going to, one, one note also, a previous council direction is that we included administration charge, which has been included in that revenue area, and, and so that was council's time, general administration time, which isn't always included in those line items, and ensure that we are accounting for that and including that in our fee structures. So that's been included as well.
Yes. So these are the items considered.
Your worship?
Council Parzol?
Just a couple of things here. You adjusted the rate from 168 to 189. You described that as purely inflation, and you mentioned a date. What date was that from? What year rather was that from?
The, the change happened in 2010, the, the previous change.
Yeah.
So it's mainly actually from January 2011 to September 2018. That's the 12.5%. Would be a little high now, but it's inflation for the period, yeah.
Well, it's, a lot of this material, I don't know how the rest of council is, about this issue. I'm a little need to process this.
Oh, yes.
Maybe I missed a meeting where, did I miss a meeting where this was processed? If I did, I apologize, but if you're, are you all in the same boat as I am?
Yeah, no, we're just getting this.
This is an important issue, because this has to be self-finalizing. Please, if I make a statement this wrong, please, I'd appreciate being knowing right away. So essentially, to fix this, you're proposing this rate increase, which is pure, for water, which is purely inflation.
Yeah.
Fine, I understand that. On the sewer side, you are proposing that the increase be, go from 1.01 to 1.13. I may have missed it. What was that based upon?
So sewer rate specifically is always 60% of the rate of water.
Water, right.
So that's, so by increasing the?
Thank you. Just need to make a note of that. Thank you. Yeah, I did know the 60%, but I didn't put it there. Okay. So the, you, you lost me when you talked about the infrastructure charge. Do you mind just?
Explain it.
Go through that again?
Yes.
Because that seemed to be quite an increase, right?
Yes. So what's happened now, so I will use water and sewer at the same time. So right now, infrastructure charge collected for water is around 1.6 million, and the infrastructure charge collected by sewer is 2.2 million. The difference is, in water, infrastructure charge, we have not changed the rate since back in 2010, where in the sewer infrastructure charge, you had two changes updated back in 15 and back in 17. So that's what makes the difference. So as part of the exercise here is like, let's increase this rate from water, as we have for sewer. And then the next step that I suggest is, because sewer is doing good, it's like it's created its own surplus, we are in a condition right now of drop the, the charge of infrastructure for sewer. So that's what is the, the exercise. So you are actually moving funds from sewer to water through the, the change on the rate.
Yep.
So can you explain to me then what this means to the average homeowner?
So?
It's the last page of the slide.
Yes.
yearly or monthly utility.
You could skip to the last page of the, we're skipping ahead a little bit with that last page.
Or just leave it to?
No, 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 that's because then they can, that's fine.
Way to go, Council Parzol.
So here, we are doing an example of a So, here we are doing an example of a bimonthly consumption of 30 cubic meter, 15, 15 cubic meters per month, so 30, with a household that has a 5.8 meter size, right? So the increase of the represents for water in a bill, in a bimonthly bill, you'd have from 50 to 56, which is the 12.5% increase. So the fixed water rate from the 37 to 50 dollars, which is a 35% increase. Then sewer, which represents 60% of water, would increase on the same proportion, but the sewer fixed charge dropped now from 50 to 40, 20% in that proportion. So now you're talking about 167 versus 108 plus a demonstration charge that we are including, which goes to 187.95 versus 167.64. So this would be an average bimonthly bill of a residence that consume about 30 cubic meters of water. So it's an ever, it's still lower than the inflation of 12.5% increase overall, right? So we kept still on the inflation side.
$10 a month.
That's $10 a month, 33 cents a day.
And I bet you these rates.
That sounds better.
Right? Counselor Lexon.
I guess, just following through more so on some comments. Flavia, as I understand what we've gone through here, we were using the infrastructure charges within water and sewer to run the operations versus capital. Is that where we were pulling our?
More on the water case.
More on the water.
The sewer was, was used for the purpose of capital.
And this is more probably for information of the public as we begin our process of engaging with you. The water and sewer utilities are self-liquidating utilities. So when we talk about operating the city, you have to detach the water and sewer from the discussion of your main discussion on the budgets for the arts or the arenas or the parks. It's very important because as we go through this, and I'm going from history now, we would enter discussions where people would put it all, because it's, it's difficult unless you're sitting, you know, and understanding, going through the process. It, many people want to combine it all together. Although it's one taxpayer, it's different funds. The water and sewer is self-liquidating. We have to charge and operate it based on what it costs. The CPI we've talked about there is only the inflationary adjustments we put in, which would not include such things as the employer health tax that we pay to our employees, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the city budget. So there's, although that may look like a catch-up, it is not. You're not catching up by doing the one-time CPI adjustment here. So again, I highlight that because of the challenges that are coming forward in the discussions and the more information we can relay to the public. I'm not going to say it's going to make it easier to make these decisions. It may be more understandable, not easier, is all.
The water and, and the infrastructure charges on the proposed increase, we have raw water going from 168 to 141. And I don't understand that, and it's the projected revenue and then the projected revenue without the adjustment, and those two numbers don't look.
No, it's, sorry, it's 125. It's 125 on that, the raw water is 125, as I specified.
Thank you. So it's currently 125?
Yes.
And it's going to 141?
Yeah.
It shows 168 as our current rate.
Yes, I think it is, yeah.
Was it bad again?
It's 125.
It is, thank you.
Counselor Jevakoff?
It's always good to catch something.
You didn't replace.
So, I can, I can appreciate the cost of living calculation to cover the increased cost of production for the water that's produced and billed. But when we originally talked about increasing or adjusting the water price to include some of the things that weren't included originally in that calculation, like administration, and I know you mentioned it there, but I missed what you said. The dollar 68 was the cost of administration and the other incidentals that weren't included in that calculation. Have they been considered for this new rate of a dollar 89 or whatever it was?
Dollar 87.
So, would be treated in a separate line. That's where you see a demonstration charge 4%. So you're still, you still have your average rate of 168 at 12.5, it's 189 on the top. And then after you add your fixed charge and sewer, on the top of that, that's where you apply 4%, which is your demonstration charge, which is new. That's why in 2018 you see zero and now you see $7 increase because that's over the, the total bill.
Okay, so it's a, it's a factor that's charged against the total bill. It's not built into the actual water price.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, good.
So, like I, I shortly mentioned about the sewer, sewer is doing good. Sewer is able to, we are able to use infrastructure charts to cover the expenditures for capital, for sending money to the reserves. So having this opportunity, and that's the reason why, because we do have a reasonable reserve portion sitting there and to minimize the impact of increase on the, for the affordability of the, the residences, that's where the suggestion of decreasing the, the infrastructure charge from sewer. So you are really suggest of shifting the, the money to where it's needed, which is water. So by doing so, and also representing 60% of the rate of water as we are doing, so it still would be able to use 100% of the infrastructure, sending for capital expenditure would then move to reserve and you'd be having an ending reserve of 2.4 million for the funds of sewer and 4.6 million for capital projects, which I do understand there are expected significant spending on sewer projects in a couple of years. So that's good because that means we have sufficient money then to be used in a couple of years to, to fund those projects. So.
So.
As recommendations. There's a couple of bullet points there that we are including as part of the, the report and things that we point out for different type of, again, funds, water, sewer. And so overall, we are suggesting as a staff, a 2.5% increase to the new rate above DBC assessment increase. An allocation of then by doing so, be able to transfer 5.43 million or 37% of capital allocation from the Peace River Agreement. The water rate, metered sales would increase 12.5%, which is based on the CPI, from 168 to 189. The water infrastructure would increase in 35%, which represents for a 5.8 meter size, from 37 to 50 bimonthly. The bulk water rate portable would increase 23% from 2.9 to 3.56, which is proportional of again, infrastructure charge increase and the, the metered rate increase. The non-portable bulk water would increase 19% from 4.50 to 5.36. The sewer rate you increase 12.5% from 1.01 to 1.13. The sewer infrastructure charge would decrease 20%. That would be able to then shift the burden to water. And we suggest that this heat, by doing so, all this exercise, we then would not need to go for a long-term borrowing at this stage and would be able to fund our current infrastructure projects and operational expenditure. And we also point out to the reduction of 1.3 as part of the suggestion from council as a short-term reduction strategy.
So the only other note, your worship, is there is a healthy alternatives section included in the report. It does not have a slide. It goes through a number of different scenarios, but without an increase in one area would result in a decrease in another, whether that be operational or, or capital is really the gist of it. Sewer is strong at this point and, and that's a result of recent updates to that fee. Water is an area that we have significant infrastructure existing and future infrastructure investment and it overall is just a higher expenditure and, and a bigger value for those costs. So there are some alternatives. We can go through those alternatives if council has questions. And that is all we have for the slide today.
Counselor Parslow?
Okay, well, I must extend my appreciation for the presentation and the work that's been done. What I like is that we, we have to supplement all the other discussions that have, we've had. We've got some clarity here. I'm quite impressed with the, with a set of recommendations. I have, as I think it was either the mayor or Counselor Letstrom taught about this being a multi-year project and I support that, you know, for sure. But question I have relates to next year's budget and the budget beyond that. The material that I have, all council has, we have a paint, a picture of what things look like. This is the easy year. Next year proves to be going to be more difficult and the year after that, perhaps even more difficult. So I want to know, is there something more we can be doing that will make our budget challenge and meet the capital needs of next year easier to attain if we do something more now? Am I making myself clear? For instance, and I'm not advocating for this, and as I said, I'm generally quite comfortable with these recommendations with a couple of caveats. But supposing, just being a bit of the devil's advocate here, I put forward that, oh, we have a, a tax increase of 5% and we apply that additional revenue to next year's capital Would that help us in the long run? I mean, what's in the back of my mind is sure, we may end up at a net assessment increase due to primarily new capital of about 300,000 this year, but next year it could be a drop of 300,000. And so I'm just wondering if strengthening the revenue from tax, the tax side of things, would that help us in dealing with next year's budget? Is there anything to be gained with being a little more aggressive this year? I hate to use that word, but you know what I'm trying to say? You know, this year, a lot more grief, so lessen the grief on everybody else in subsequent years.
Do you want to answer that? Loaded.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
I mean.
I like everything you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, council is going, going to have to wrestle with a lot of different decisions. Ultimately, your budget and your capital program reflects the services that you provide, right? And part of our, our challenge is that we are utilizing a lot of our revenue, whether it be PRA or taxation being the two key, on operations. And council has identified some short-term strategies. We are going to take a look at those long-term strategies, but until this council understands exactly what those services look like as we move forward and, and the areas that we're moving forward, I, I can't say, obviously additional funding is going to help next year's capital program, but based on the decisions you make today, based on the decisions we make further through some of our strategic planning, that'll reflect the funds needed. So yes, a 5% increase would result in additional surplus in that accumulated surplus at year end and could be transferred into a capital program and would result in additional funding available for capital. But until we iron out that infrastructure that's going to be required into the future, I can't tell you if that's the end-all or the silver bullet.
I think the, to me, the message that we obviously want to give is this is about building a long-term, solid financial future for our community. This is the first step in it. The strategies moving forward in the five-year, seven-year, 10-year are going to be looking at all of the services we provide, how we provide them and how they're funded. And are those sustainable in the long term and what do we do in order to meet that growing delta that exists in the cost of services and our capacity for our residents and business community to be able to continue to fund them? We've done an amazing, I think as Counselor Lexon said, we've done an amazing job with that financial infusion from Peace River Agreement of building amazing facilities and infrastructure, but they're expensive to operate. And the long term is how do we continue to develop the processes in place to sustain them in the long term? Great job today, thank you. Counselor Lexon.
All right, thanks, your worship. And I'll start by saying thank you as well to Duncan, Flavia and all the staff, doing the financial picture and having, first of all, the work you do is tremendous. Having us understand it is far greater, I think, the work you have to do. So, one of the most fundamental.
What are you saying?
It's interesting, we're, I think we're making a historical shift away from, I guess, where we've been. We're, we're going to, the shift is, and I'm going to read through a number of things. I mean, to balance our budget, we're going to discontinue transferring funds from accumulated operational surplus. We're going to try and accomplish that. We're going to stop transferring funds from the carry-forward capital reserves to run operations. We're going to try and shift that back to capital. We're going to reduce the infrastructure charges, we talked on that, on the water and sewer and use it for what it's meant for, which is capital, not operations. We're going to reduce the portion of the PRA. And when people talk about the PRA, the Peace River Agreement, it's the fair share agreement, so there's no confusion there, it just was a name change. Governments like to change the name when new governments come in and, and everybody goes through that. We are going to make sure that our annual tax levy increase, and this is something, you know, many years ago I wouldn't have said, has to at the minimum keep up with CPI. I, I think it has to go even further, to be honest, your worship. And I look at that and the 2.5% increase, as much as I'm not a tax and gouge guy, I'm leaning more to the 3% option that's out there. And I do know that has an impact on homeowners out there. I'm a homeowner and I would pay more taxes. But we are, and you've pointed this out, Counselor Parslow, I think at the beginning of a process that we're going to work our way through on behalf of the people of the city we represent, there's going to be many questions as we move forward and hopefully we'll be able to give the answers. Whether people will like the answers or not is a whole other story when, when we deliver them because I don't think it's, as I said earlier, to get to this point, you know, we thanked Duncan, we have thanked Flavia and the staff, your worship, I'll say thanks to you. You're the leader, you're the mayor, you're the guy that's here every day too, working with the staff to ensure we get the information. But I, I don't want us to leave today to say, wow, that was easy to find 1.3 million dollars in our operations because it has been brutally hard. And we still have to go out and engage the public in this and see if we can maintain that or go further. But for every day that passes, our budgets are January, okay, December 31st, January 1st. So we're going to be four months into our budget before we finalize this. So if from today's discussion, we make dramatic changes to say, maybe we aren't going to go that deep, it just means either, I don't really know what it means. It means we'd have to take the rest of our surplus and use it to balance the budget or whatever. But the key to this as we move forward is a mass understanding of not just our council, but the people we represent and engagement is the most important thing we can actually talk about, so. Boy, I'm saying a lot of things today, but about, I'm trying to curb it in a way that there's some tough challenges out there, there's some tough decisions. it in a way that there's some tough challenges out there, there's some tough decisions. We're here to make them on your behalf, but we want your input.
Thank you. Counselor Javecah?
So, you know, I keep thinking about the people that are in the toughest positions to pay taxes and water and all the other fees that they have to pay. So, with a small tax increase, you know, the average household is looking at $40 or whatever. But you add the water, that's another 120. So, that's considerable. That's getting pushed up closer to 200. We have gone through a process where we, in my, to my way of thinking, we've taken the low-hanging fruit from operations. And that's just the start. So, as we go deeper next year, or even later this year, you know, it gets tougher and tougher. The options, like the options are there to reduce our services, to reduce operational costs, or to increase taxes and other fees. We've got a whole list of fees that we can increase. Whether you call them taxes or fees, they're all money that the taxpayer has to pay annually, and they really don't have much choice. So, like, I don't know. And some of the things that we did this year, I don't know if they're sustainable. I don't know if we can carry them forward to next year and maintain that level, or if they're going to gradually increase again, and we have to look at decreasing again. So, I mean, we're, it's going to be tough here to, for the public, because I can see when I run into some of the business owners on the street, and they realize that there's potential tax increase and an increase in water and sewer services, they're incurring a lot of costs now. I don't know if the vacant buildings around town, if the shops and stuff that are vacant reflect, you know, the level of taxation here or not. But it's, I get more people, I think, from the business end talking to me about taxes than I do from residential. Residential, you know, a lot of people can absorb, but, you know, an extra couple hundred bucks a year, but a lot of people can't. And it's going to be tough on them. So, I'm concerned, and I hope the public gets the message that this is serious. And, you know, if there's things that, the services that they're willing to pay for, I guess, step up and offer to pay. If there's services that they think can be reduced, then say that, too. But I mean, you know, what typically happens, and it's happened in the past, when you, you know, you cut a service and then you get representation from a small group about that particular cut, and, you know, usually, we cave in and, you know, accept it. But I don't know where we're going here if we can't continue cutting and sustainable cuts.
Thank you. I just want to add one point here, that 1.3 million in cuts, we saw that from a reduction in our operating spending. And it hit me just earlier was the $300,000 in the additional health tax that we're absorbing in there, and another 170,000 or 180,000 in a reduction from the PRA, Peace River Regional District on that 911 service. So, we've absorbed almost a half a million dollars, absorbed another half a million dollars in pure costs that we don't even talk about in the additional reduction. So, now you're close to $2 million in terms of revenue or expenditures that we're paying for or removing from a total tax base of 15 million. So, you cut 2 million bucks out of 15 million in that money. So, what we've done is exactly that. It's significant. The future is built on a strong financial future for this community, swinging that PRA into an acceptable level, I think, is the mantra for us in terms of what we're going to demonstrate over the next long term, whatever that is. So, we have some recommendations, and I'm looking for us to move forward. Counselor Parslow?
Oh, I'd like to move the recommendations as presented.
Thank you. Do you want them one by one, or are they good as a whole, a basket?
I think they're up on the-
They're up on the screen?
So, we're okay.
So, the only comment I make about that is if there was something that somebody was specifically concerned about, we don't want to hold up the entire process for one particular area. And so, are you guys, I don't want to pre-guess the results of the discussion, but is it better for us to go one through, one by one, on the items so that Council have the opportunity? Or do you want the back? Motion's made that we have, the recommendation is made, seconded. Do we have a seconder for a second time? Counselor Lechtman, discussion. Counselor Lechtman?
Your worship, I've been looking at this and that recommendation, and we may want to, I seconded it so we could have discussion. I think this is a beginning point, as difficult a discussion as we've had. If something comes forward where we can reduce the city operational budget by 1.4, 5 million per Council's priorities, I wouldn't want to tie our hands that we're stuck at 1.3. So, maybe a friendly amendment of, I know there's no such things before somebody jumps out and says that, maybe that this would be the minimum as our starting point.
This gets us to a balanced budget as required that we're required to present and meets that legislative requirement for PRA and all those things. But it's not going to potentially be the final, because we're going to have a public engagement, and we have some other stuff on our assessment role and things that may impact it. This is the recommendation Council are making today to get to that final budget, or that first approved budget by legislation. Duncan?
So, through your worship, this will make up the brunt of the second draft that will come forward on February 25th. By no means is Council committing to anything prior to public consultation or those other budget meetings. As we update numbers, Council will have further decisions and discussion.
Gives us, it gives us a point where we've got a balanced budget as required. I think Council's had, we've had lots of, when I think about it, we have lots of deliberations, lots of discussions, but certainly, as the process unfolds over the next month, we're going to get some additional assessment, we're going to get PRA, we may get some input. So, that'll give us the opportunity to make those changes as we require, or as Council sees they want to consider. Everybody okay with that? Counselor Parslow?
Yes, this is the second. These are the recommendations we're carrying forward into our second draft.
That's right.
And then-
I mean, there's one or two items in the budget. I'm hoping Council will see the light and maybe change direction as well.
Oh, that'll happen.
Oh, I have faith. I mean, but there's one big item in there that I just, anyways, yes. So, then, the more definitive is when we go to the first bylaw, right?
Me first?
Me, please. Sorry, Brenda?
Oh, I was just going to comment that part of the recommendation, the wording in there says all of that, but it's subject to changes required during the budget process.
Good. It covers that off. Any concerns Council have? Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? The budget meeting for the Provo's Public Budget Meeting on March 1st. I'd like to suggest we move that to an evening meeting and do it to the Co-op Mercer Hall. Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, is move that.
It's March 1st?
March 11th.
March 11th.
March 11th.
Do we need to have a time or staff?
It's usually 6:30, 7:00?
Yeah, Brenda recommended time?
7:00.
7:00?
So, I'll move that, we change March 11 to 7:00 PM at the Co-op Mercer Hall.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Kemp, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? The other one I'd like to maybe raise just very quickly as a topic, is we are pretty focused around the principles, and there's some things that we'll move a little bit, but our capital budget should stay pretty consistent. And is there an opportunity for us to give direction from Council to administration to be able to move forward with some of those capital projects, to be able to start that process so that Kevin's not waiting for May for us to approve it, for some components? And I'm wondering if Council would be considered that that would be an appropriate motion to make that we give that, because we're, we know we're going to have a 5 million, 6 million, 7 million dollar capital budget. It's not going to move much. Counselor Parslow?
I'd be prepared to do that. We have the budget, capital budget before us, that a number of those items are major items, and the earlier we get going on those for tendering and what the better the community is. It worked very well last year when we did it.
I would think if it's going to do anything, it's going to go up. It's not going to go down. I can't see us having it less than what it is today, because we've kind of locked into that. So, I think that's a, it was very worthwhile last year administration. So, I got a motion to have a seconder. Counselor Javecah? Sorry, I just want to ask Duncan, do you guys have any?
Just, I mean, last year, we tagged two or three major projects that we moved forward on. If I was going to put anything forward to start now, it would be those seasonal projects, being that paving and that sidewalk program and getting that going and allowing us to go out to tender. We could wait on some of the other pieces, if that's Council's wish.
Yeah, it was just something that I was thinking. Counselor Lechtman?
Just a quick question through to administration. Have we pursued on our paving programs particularly? I mean, individually, each of our communities go out, as I understand it, to get bids. Have we entertained discussing with our neighbors, whether it be Pooscoopy, Tumbler, Chet One, Fort St. John, combining our package to put it out as a significantly larger bid and see if we can get, I guess, further competitive bids?
No, through your worship, we haven't done that. We've tried a few other scenarios internally. We've done long-term contracts, we've done short-term. We've broken up, last year, we broke all the program up into individual contracts, individual bids. Yeah, we haven't looked at combining with other municipalities. That may be a logistical problem. We struggle sometimes to ensure the contractor is in our town doing our work-
Yeah.
-as opposed to someone else's work. So, I don't know if that would be a problem.
DGS up in Fort St. John?
Probably this year, maybe too late, but I would, we'll bring it forward at a later date. I think it's going to be worth pursuing that discussion with our neighbors to see. I mean, for every $100,000 we save collectively, it's about, well, or 150,000, it's about a 1% tax increase. So, I'll bring that forward at a later date, and we'll see if we can do some investigation on that once we get through this year's.
Good. Further discussion on the motion? You ready for the question? Everybody's clear? All those, sorry, did you have something?
Just, I guess, clarification. So, our applications we've got in for grant funding is not contingent on this vote at all, because those would be future years.
Those are 2020 projects.
Yeah. Brenda?
Actually, clarification. So, this is to approve the capital projects, all of-
Just paving and sidewalks?
Is it all of them, or just paving?
Yeah. The ones that you're going to have to do the engineering line?
Yes.
Sorry.
Seasonal.
Just without knowing the details, the multiplex exterior repairs, how contingent upon season are those? Are they pretty short-order, or is that something we want to include in there?
So, I would ask Levi on that. I believe it's mostly gutters and cladding and smaller piecework, but-
Yeah, a lot of that work would be best suited, you know, come the spring. So, if that went along with the paving as well, we might be able to lock down some of those contractors earlier on that would commit to having some of that summer work earlier in the year rather than trying to get it through in May or June.
We'll direct administration to give it that back if there's some benefits to us bringing those forward. I just think we move it forward as soon as we possible, because you're going to have engineering and all that work done, so.
Okay.
Good. Sorry, Robin, you can't address Council in this forum.
Sorry, okay.
So, on direction to administration, everybody's clear? Motion to move forward is made. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Further discussion? Counselor Javecah?
Just, I was just thinking of next year's budget. Are we planning on doing the budget earlier this for 2020?
I'm seeing a nod from the CFO.
Yes, that's my goal. They start early, and then, at least, if we can get a bylaw kind of first reading by early February, that would be great, because at that time we would have the information of PRA and a good reasonable idea about what BC Assessment is bringing, so, yeah.
Good. Duncan?
I will note that in 2017, our first draft was, I think, February 5th was the first time Council saw it. Last year, December 14th, we did some capital and other discussion, and this year, strategic priorities, November 29th. So, we're slowly injecting that into the plan.
Any other items for the budget meeting? Anything else anybody has?
Supremity coming to us.
So, we put an invitation out to the, I'll bring it back under open. Good. Motion to adjourn the budget meeting. Counselor Lechtman, Counselor Wilber, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. So, we'll have a quick minute break, and we'll go back into closed, back into our open Council meeting, and we're back on to item-
8.2.
Sorry?
8.2.
8.2 of our agenda, which we're lifting from the table on zoning amendment by law number 4401, 1552 LaRan Drive. Brenda?
Just a motion to lift it from the table?
Motion to lift from the table, Counselor Lechtman, Counselor Wilber, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? And we had some discussion prior to recessing for close, so we're back into our open now on this zoning amendment by law for consideration of adoption. Counselor Lechtman?
Just if I could, can we discuss it, or are we waiting for a motion first?
We have to make a motion.
We had a motion for a discussion of the zone, so that was the motion that we're dealing with. So, you're still discussing?
And I think I was speaking to the issue of parking seemed to be one of the concerns that was raised. You indicated that under the zoning or the proposed zoning change, it would still meet the requirements for the off-street parking, which is, I believe, one stall for each unit, and correct me if I'm wrong. So, there is a triplex there with a two-car garage. Is that what's attached to the triplex?
Each unit of the triplex has its own garage, so there's three garage stalls-
Three.
-and then a driveway in front of those. So, there's technically six spots for that triplex.
Okay, so that answers. So, they're two above the required limit then for that. The other concern that was expressed that seemed legitimate, and I would share, is the on-street parking that occurs there. Whether we deal with that now or following this discussion, I would like that looked into to see the reasons those signs were removed. It does seem a little tight, and safety would be a concern for me based on fire access, for example. I know being brought forward by one of the residents, the concern was a parking issue. And if I could get some answers to that, that would be much appreciated.
One of the items that's under our diary is the Residential Development Committee in dealing with our rooming houses. It had parking, it had business licenses, it had non-performing use, and that's part of that work that we're doing right now with zoning in terms of, under that work. And certainly, parking was a big piece of that. It will be addressed through there, and if we want to give directions specifically in that regard. Did you hear that? Counselor Wilber?
Well, that's kind of where I'm leaning. Like, there was no parking signs there. So, I mean, I would be prepared to say, let's put the no parking signs back. There's ample-
Separate issue going to our-
To this, but it's, but if this zoning goes through and that's allowed, we've clarified the parkings there. I think separately, then we should have that discussion. So, it's done in one shot, and the neighborhood can, is, has some appeasement if we approve this. We at least are saying to the neighbors, we recognize what you've said to us.
So, just on the signs, through your worship, just a bit of an update. I had Aaron kind of look into that, because I remember the signs being there. I also remember them coming down. For some reason, I just, we couldn't remember what. So, it appears what happened is when the units to the east were being constructed, we took the sign, the no parking signs down in front of these units because of the construction and the need for some on-street parking because of what was going on. And I think our mistake probably didn't put them back up. So, that's probably something that we can fix.
Thanks, well.
Counselor Javecah? So, is there potential for the new report to require more parking than what's required in the existing policy?
The new bylaw?
Bylaw. Can you require more than what's required in the bylaw?
Based off of the proposed zoning project that we're undergoing, or just as part of this? Yes, Council could require any number of parking stalls. Require 50 per unit or anything is-
Existing would be grandfathered.
Yeah, the existing would be grandfathered, however, moving in the future, adding them for parking stalls.
Part of that residential development-
It's going to come out of that parking. We're looking at it.
Because we said, I think through there, if I remember right, any, you had to have one off-street parking for every bedroom that was accommodated or built within this unit. suiteed unit. So, if they have a suite in the basement of a house, and they have two bedrooms in it, and they have to have two off-street parks for each of those bedrooms under that suiteed unit, RS2 zoning, correct?
Yeah, I believe it. That's correct.
And that was just to address that issue for us apart from that. Further discussion? Motion?
I would move the recommended-
Adoption.
Adoption.
Second? For a second time, do we have a seconder? Councilor Lexton, discussion on the motion to adopt. Ready for your question? All in favor? Opposed, carried? Thank you. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
So, to be clean then, do we need to make a motion to direct staff to put those no parking signs back in front of these buildings? Or no, just something we're going to do?
If it is what I think it is, which we just took it down temporarily during the construction to allow some on-street parking and then neglected to put them back up, that's simply operational.
Okay. Because just my other concern besides fire is, there's a school there. We have a lot of schoolchildren walking and dodging in and out of cars to get home, so just for safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for council?
One item, just very quickly before I close off, that I forgot about last week when I was at Natural Resource Farm, and I got a call back from the guy from DC Emergency Health Services, and I thought about raising it. He had canceled our meeting. We hadn't set up a call with him about the air ambulance services in Dawson Creek. He phoned me on Wednesday, and his father-in-law, his dad had a heart attack for the holidays, but he'd canceled. I reached out to him, and he phoned me last week when he got back for it. And basically, what he said is, the existing infrastructure in the city of Dawson Creek Airport is sufficient for air ambulance service, both the turboprop and the jets. The jets are used less only because they're so much more expensive to operate. They don't use the jets in every circumstance. They lean to the turboprops for that service. But the jets and the turboprops have sufficient runway at 5,000 feet. He said, you're never going to get a pilot, not to say they would like more runway. But what he did say to me is, it meets the needs for them today. They don't have any indication that they're going to change the types of planes that would change the need for a different runway configuration. But what he did say was, they've done a bunch of work on that, and they are prepared to come and give us an overview and give a presentation to council. I know how important a topic that is for us in terms of that airport, and we've got a major capital project. So, I asked him that we would get ahold of him, and we'll schedule that as soon as possible for him to come up and do a presentation to council and give him a half an hour, an hour, figure about that runway extension project, it's such a significant one. And I apologize for not bringing that up.
Thank you for that information, Your Worship. Would it be possible to have him follow up with your conversation, put that in writing to council, what he has just told you? I mean, that's, in my mind, very important information as I consider what we do at our airport, because the safety of our citizens, the ability for air ambulance to be a key part of that, you know, future is going to come into my decision-making.
Yeah, absolutely. And he said they'd be happy to come here as soon as we needed to do that presentation, and I'm good to be able to get them, and I'll follow it up with them and ask them if they could give us a kind of an overview of the current requirements and what they do and how our infrastructure lines up for that service we offer today.
All right.
Councilor Javecca?
So, did he mention anything about the reason that they had to take Mr. Bice up to Fort St. John?
I didn't get into specific examples of individuals in terms of services and stuff. It was more about that overarching discussion about, okay, if our infrastructure today is 5,000 feet, and you're continuing to provide that, or are there any aspects of our airport, either runway or facilities or services or de-icing or anything, that would impact or influence the services they provide to our community today and the region on behalf of that air ambulance service? But I was really encouraged, he said, look, we've got a ton of work, and we've got some material, and I actually want him to come and do that, because it's the benefit of all of us to have that face-to-face and ask those questions, right? And I was really happy that he said they would be happy to do that, and I think it's worthwhile for us to do that as soon as possible. Like I said, I didn't get into specific questions about it, it was more about, I wanted to